Don't let me know if you want to borrow my switcher I bought in case you're in the draft.
I faced the draft back in the 70s.
You faced the draft in the 70s.
It's hard to say.
Actually, I wasn't lying.
How long are you in your casket?
Through August.
Were you conscious?
Yes.
And then they're gonna, thank you so much, then they're gonna determine after that.
I was very conscious in the 70s.
And the tenants are grounded and so they're gonna have their casket for a while. And I just ordered it, it should be here tomorrow.
We're ready to study.
They're ready.
We have to finish our calls.
The bike was something you nail on it. Because I'm gonna use that through August. They don't want it to be great.
Cell phone check. Anybody have any cell phones, please turn them off. Thank you.
Don't accept any calls from direct TV.
I guess if you're diabetic, it takes three to take two of those.
The planning commission meeting for July 14th, 2014 is called to order. The first item on our agenda is adoption of planning commission minutes for three different previous meetings. The first one is for February 10th, 2014. Do we have any?
I move a brutal of the minutes of February 10th.
Actually, I have a couple corrections.
Well, you want to wait till the second?
Okay.
Second. You have some corrections?
Yes. Nothing big. There's a...
I have a tiny one.
Unless it's your name. There's a couple names that were mis-spelled.
Yeah, Mr. Gibbons.
Mr. Gibbons and Mr. Reader.
Versus Mr. Gibbons.
And then on one of the items, there was an unidentified person with numerous question marks behind the...
Page eight.
Page eight.
All right, member of the public with...
Yeah, page six and page eight had several spelling errors on those.
But you got it right in the end part.
Okay.
Spelled his name right at the end.
All right. We'll look at those and correct them. Do you want those to come back to you, or are you okay with staff just correcting those?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
You can just tell us who the question mark person was.
Yeah. Who is the mystery person?
August 10th, or sorry.
February 10th.
February 10th.
We could approve the August 10 minutes, but we, if we go into the future in our time machines...
That would be days of future past.
All right, let's see.
I'll move as amended.
One second.
Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Abstain.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Guile?
Aye.
The next set of meeting minutes are for February 24th, 2014.
To approve?
Second.
I also have a couple name spelling, same person on pages five and six. Mr. Reader.
Mr.?
Mr. Reader.
Reader.
How do you spell his name?
Two Es.
Oh, the R, Reed, as in R-E-B. Okay.
Thank you. Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Guile?
Abstain, because I was absent.
Thank you.
And then the third set of meeting minutes was for March 10th, 2014.
Move approval.
Second.
Any corrections?
Nope. There is one on page three, there's a question mark person again, but...
Okay. Check that.
About midway down.
Thank you. Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Guile?
Aye.
I have a quick question for you, since it pertains to one of your projects. So when we were reviewing the South End concept plan, as I recall, there were a number of things in these minutes where, as I recall in the final document, they were all going to be, there were conditions and things, and I remember seeing those conditions, and I thought you did a really good job of summarizing those, even though sometimes the notes tend to be a little abbreviated, but I thought you did a good job of making sure all of those items that the planning commission had concerns about were noted. So they're not only noted in the record, they'll be noted in the document as well.
Thank you.
Actually, it's I should be thanking you. You made it easy.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is public comments for non-agenda items. This would be if anyone in the audience has a comment about something that is not on the printed agenda for the evening. Seeing none, we will proceed to the public hearing, and the first item on the public hearing is PC 14-072, the Lynn Avenue, Leland Road, and Myers Road Corridor Plan, Planning File LE 14-04. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you. The recommendation from staff tonight is to take testimony from any member of the public who is present here to speak on this item. The planning commission and the city commission have heard this item at a work session, but this is the first public hearing, the first evidentiary public hearing. The plan is still in draft form and is not 100% yet, and the planning, the Public Works Director, John Lewis, has requested that this item be continued until August 25th, so that we can present the final draft with Wallace Engineering, who is the consultant on the plan. Any statements that are made tonight will become part of the record, and any questions that are asked about the Lynn Avenue Corridor Plan tonight, we will take and respond to, we will write down, and there are no public works staff here to address this item tonight, but we certainly will respond to any questions from the public at the next hearing. And the basis of this plan is it's a concept plan for the Lynn Avenue, Leland Road, and Myers Road Corridor Plan, to assure that it is a functioning and safe multimodal corridor in the future, which means that it has a range of safe transportation options for vehicles, pedestrians, and bicyclists. It will be adopted as an amendment to the city's transportation system plan, which was adopted last year in August of 2013. So whenever we amend a transportation plan, it becomes part of our comprehensive plan, and the city makes what's called a legislative application in order to review that amendment. So this is a legislative file, and it will be, the plan will be used to guide funding and engineering decisions for specific portions of that corridor in the future. It'll provide further detail and guidance for the Public Works Department, and we also provide public notice to everyone within 300 feet of that corridor. So we did send out notices within 300 feet of the corridor, as well as notice in the newspaper, but we are not ready to present a staff report on this yet, or a recommendation. Thank you.
Do we have people from the public who have signed up to testify?
I do not have anyone from the public who's signed up to testify on this just yet.
Did neighborhood associations who are along the corridor also receive notice?
Yes. That included anyone that touched it, McLaughlin and...
Not the individual property owners, but the neighborhood association.
Right, the actual neighborhood association, yeah.
I already knew about it, but I just wanted to let you know I didn't get one.
Right.
As a separate, with my other hat on.
Okay, got it. Yeah.
Maybe you figured I already knew about it.
That was part of it. Well, it was an open house as well, where as prior to this legislative application, there was an open house along the corridor as well, and the neighborhood associations were notified of that as well. Yes.
So is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item this evening?
We have a couple.
If you wish to come up and identify yourself, Pete has a card that you can...
Yeah, there's some comment cards in the back, if you just want to fill that out after you're done, you can hand it to me.
You can, you can fill out the card after you've testified.
Just make sure it's readable, so you don't end up being a question mark on the minutes, so we know who you are. Because your testimony is important to us.
So...
There's two of you, why don't you both come up?
One of you can go ahead and take the table. Betty? Is that Betty Savage?
Yes.
Hi, Betty. Good.
I haven't been to one for quite some time, so I'm not sure of your procedure, but my name is Betty Savage, and I am the owner of the Savage Mini Mall on that five-corner intersection where the Plaid Pantry is.
And I should have forewarned everybody, typically when we have a full house like this, we limit everybody's time at the microphone to three minutes, so I'll just give you that heads up.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I'm not in favor of it, I'll be upfront. The reason I'm not in favor of it, in 1965, I believe it was, they tried to do this, and it ended up that they changed the intersection at that year, and at that time, I was to give a portion of my property, so that they could arrange it the way it is now, and in doing so, they made a few bad mistakes. Anyway, make a long story short, we ended up in court, and the city did not come out in good favor. They lost. So here I am again, with the same thing. At that time, property was taken, and most of it was taken from my property, and I see by the drafting that you guys have done, that again, I have the same problem. I don't see very much taken from anyone else. I'm the only true business, retail business, in that corner, and have been there for several years, I think it's 20-some years now. And as a result, I don't feel I should have to give any more land, but the way you've designed it, you have taken some more, want to take some more of my land. As it is, I barely have enough parking now for the people that enter there, and I don't feel that I should give one inch, or one foot, or whatever else it takes. So that's my feelings on that part of it. I did ask for a traffic count in that area, and until Friday was the first day that I received it, and as I looked it over, I noticed that it said from 2008 up until 2012 is what they gave me, and in that traffic count of accidents, I was told the reason this was being done, because there was too many accidents on that corner. So I requested that traffic count as to accidents, and from 2008 to 2012, I found that there was nine total accidents in a five-corner intersection. I looked and I thought, this can't be. I know four of those were inside of my parking lot at the mall. People sometimes think we have drive-in stores, but I looked at that and thought, this can't be. I said, my gosh, if from 2008 to 2012, you've only had nine accidents in a five-corner intersection, I can only say that Oregon City drivers must be pretty good drivers. I don't understand why this has to be done, except that somebody requested, and I'm not sure who it was, but it came to my attention, that someone requested bicycle path. That's fine, I'm not against bicycle pass, I love to ride a bicycle, if I was a lot younger, I would still be doing it. But as a result, I can't see spending this account of money when you people, not particularly you guys, because you weren't on this board all this time, but the city itself has not put sidewalks in. I mean, we've got streets that people have to walk on the side of the road to get to where they're going, and I think it's ridiculous to worry about spending money when then things should come first priority. And that's my three minutes. Thank you very much.
Just real quick, the corridor plan isn't just your intersection, and a large portion of that plan is to put sidewalks in. On those portions of the plan, do you have a concern, or is it just that roundabout?
I'm concerned about the roundabout.
I just want to make sure.
If I could take one more minute. I was told by the people at the gas station down by the roundabout near the Home Depot, they says, I wish, and I'm a good Christian, I wish to God they'd have never put it in, they said. They said, we have more people stopping in here, how in the heck do we get off of this, and how do we get to here, and how do we get to there? So I don't, it doesn't make sense to me. I mean, if we've got all this money, let's get the kids and the pedestrians, and you can put your bicycle pass on most of those streets, I know part of Central Point's already has them. So to me, it's kind of a backward idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tell us how you really feel.
Thank you, Betty.
Very good, thank you. And, next person?
Thanks. Thank you. My name is Arnold Wagner. I live at 18750 South Forest Grove Loop, which is outside the city limits, but I own the property at 118 Warner Melney Road, which is just a little ways up from the roundabout, and that is what my comment is about, is I own that property, it's a rental property right now, and as we all know, Warner Melney Road is an extremely busy road, it's hard to get in and out, I mean, just when I'm over there doing some maintenance, it's hard to get in and out. I really don't know how the roundabout will affect that, and so I'm just here saying that I don't know if the roundabout is going to improve that situation, or make it more difficult for my tenants to get in and out of their property. And all I'm really requesting is that, I know that we're at the concept level, at the time when the plans become more detailed, I just want to have an opportunity to talk with somebody, whether it's the design staff, or somebody, a city planner, or somebody, and just, you know, if we could just talk about the details and see if there's something we can do here that gives the city what they need, but, you know, does it make life more difficult for my tenants? At this point, I don't know. I don't know how the roundabout would make it better or worse.
Is it a house of...
It's a residence, yeah.
It's a residence, okay.
Yeah, it's rented, it's a residence.
So Pete, the plans are at the planning department, right? So somebody could come in and ask to talk to somebody about them, or...
Well, we have a copy of the plan in draft form, planning department, and in the detailed appendices and things, the public works department can help you look at, and the project manager for the public works department is John Burrell, and John Lewis is our public works director, who's working very closely with him on this plan, so between us three, we can find out as much as we can.
At what point would that conversation be appropriate? Because my understanding is that we...
Now.
Okay.
While it still says draft, it's a much easier thing to move lines.
Right. Yeah, and a lot of times, you know, this concept will provide the basis for future design, it may not provide the full detailed engineering design for a particular section in front of the property, and what happens is the public works department goes out to bid on the specific designs and does construction plans, and we'll find out through talking to John Burrell when they anticipate that phase happens, it's much more detailed engineering.
And I have Mr. Burrell's number, so I'll just give him the call.
Okay, yeah.
Okay?
Very good, thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any others with comments about this agenda item?
Sure.
Come on up.
Come on up. Do you have a card?
I'll get one for you.
Yeah, go ahead and do your...
Peter, Pete will give you a card, and you can fill it out after you're done. Almost called him Tony.
Yeah, he's Tony. The other Tony.
The stand-in Tony.
The other Tony.
Norma Building. E-L-D-I-N-G.
You can do that one.
So, your name is Norma?
Norma Building, yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm opposed to this completely, because I don't think we need to spend the money. I've only lived, I bought that house a year and a half ago, and I've completely remodeled it, so I'm planning to stay here for a while.
And where is it?
142 Ethel. Ethel and Lynn, I think it is, about. I'd like to have, wouldn't we get the amount of money this is going to cost? I'd like to know if this is something we're going to get to vote on as a general election somewhere, and if so, how many people get to vote on this, because, how many people are going to pay for this? Because I'm told by friends who live further out than I, that they didn't receive this notice at all, so would they be paying for it, or just the people within that corridor?
Well, a large portion of...
Pete?
So... I don't know the answer yet. What happens when a plan like this is adopted is, it becomes part of the city's capital improvement budget, and then there's a determination made on what portion of the improvements can be paid for out of existing public works budgeting.
Not all people would pay for it, just with certain people perhaps, and then...
I don't know yet. We did get that question earlier today from someone else, so it is a question that we need to answer before the public hearing is closed, and we'll address it specifically.
Delayed. We don't let them out. That was it, I guess.
Okay.
Okay.
She did ask the question about voting.
Voting?
Went to her, I guess.
Is this something we could vote on?
Well, as an amendment to the legislative, our existing transportation system plan is already an adopted plan. Typically, what happens is the planning commission will make a recommendation, the city commission, based on public testimony at both the planning commission and city commission level, makes a final determination on the plan and adopts it. There's typically not a vote for this sort of thing, yeah, since it's considered part of the comprehensive plan, and we make a determination based on the criteria for approval of a transportation system plan, being in the best interests of the city at large, and so when we provide a staff report and recommendation on August 25th, if that's when we continue this public hearing too, those are the base, that's the criteria on which the city makes the decision.
I have a question, then, if you don't know about, if it's time that we, you make up your mind, you say yes, you want to do this. Is there any way we can say no?
Well, there's a...
You'll do it, that's it.
The way that this sort of thing could be said no to is if somebody appealed it to the Land Use Board of Appeals, which is the Oregon State Land Use Board of Appeals.
But the simple answer to this is, this isn't going to increase your taxes or anything like that, it's as we put money aside, like, you know, 1% out of our budget, we set aside, I'm just picking numbers just for the conversation, we, you know, of the budget we already have, we just set a little bit aside until we get enough to do something, and then we do that something.
Okay.
Also, as people develop along here, they pay what's called system development charges, which is a fee to the city to make these updates. So those will also be set aside. So, like out on Myers and Leland, where it's more open area, somebody wants to put in two houses, well, part of the put in two houses, they have to fix the road, put in, excuse me, put in sidewalks and all that, so that's where it's going to come from. There won't be any increased taxes to you because of this, it's just a focus, basically for safety, because of the schools and everything along the way, that we're trying to get kids not having to dive in ditches when cars come by and that sort of thing.
The funding on all of these is actually pretty complicated, and Pete, when, the next time we meet on this subject, I assume we'll have a full presentation of the plan, so I would encourage you to attend the next meeting when this is presented, is that August 25th?
Well, that's the recommendation for continuing.
Okay. And, and the reason I suggest you do that is because there will be a slide presentation that shows all the graphics, and they will explain a lot of the funding options at that time, and I don't think we can say categorically that there would not be any tax increases, but that's not the only funding mechanism for these projects. This gets rolled into the transportation plan, which was approved last year, and all of the projects are earmarked by priority, so this would fall into place with the priority of other projects that have been talked about, and then the funding has to be available before we go ahead with the projects.
Okay, thank you.
But I would encourage anyone who's interested in this subject to attend the...
I'll be there.
And at that time, you also have the right to ask questions then, too?
Right.
Even if you have today.
I just got the letter, yeah, July 7th, I think it was, and that thing said you had to be, have you written a question by July 3rd? I just make it, obviously.
Well, you'll have an opportunity at the next public hearing to make a comment after you've seen the plan, and then you'll be able to respond to that.
Okay, thank you.
Could you also add to that what Damon mentioned to Mr. Wagner, is that it might be a good idea if she has availability to come in and talk to one of the staff about the document before the public hearing, so she's not getting that whole thing sort of...
Last minute.
Well, yeah.
I think you just said that.
Did I?
So, of course, anyone is welcome to go to the planning department office, which is just up the road on, but what's your address up there?
620... Nope, this is 625.
221 Malala Avenue, Suite 200, right where Pearl Street crosses Malala, that's where planning is.
Or if you've been here a while, the old Copland Lumber Building.
You can, you can, if you're interested, call and find out when the best time to come and view those documents would be, and you could see those prior to the next meeting. Are there any others that wish to speak on this matter tonight?
Yep.
Laura Sadowski.
My name is Laura Sadowski, and it's S-A-D-O-W-S-K-I, so you don't need to correct it in the next minutes.
No question marks for you.
Right. I represent Plaid Pantries, our corporate office is in Beaverton, Oregon, and one of our stores is at the current roundabout here with Lynn Avenue, Leland, Meyer, that, my, our concern with Plaid Pantry is with the roundabout and the ingress egress to the shopping center, we have issues with our delivery trucks trying to make the turns getting in and out of there with the medians in place, and same with customers, once we, the customers can't figure out how to get there as well, then we have low sales, you know, that doesn't, the customers don't usually come back. We've found this on other properties when things have been altered as far as getting in and out of our center, that they go elsewhere, and then they, they don't ever come back. But our main concern besides the sales is, is the deliveries getting through there, making their turns without going through the neighborhood behind us, being able to make a right and a left inside the center.
Yeah, there's actually several businesses that's concerned with, so that's, I hadn't thought of that, thank you.
Getting in and out. That's really all I have at the moment.
Do you have any facilities in Portland, well, I know you have, excuse me, you have lots of facilities in Portland, are there any facilities that are... Are there any facilities that are operated by Plaid Pantry that are adjacent or near any other traffic control devices such as roundabouts or little diverters or things of that sort, that you might have some experience in letting us know about how that's working?
Well, we have one store in particular that was doing very well until a median was put in to stop people from going in and out. And this one is off of Cornell and Murray. And we have documentation, which I don't have here tonight, actually showing you when that median went in and diverting the, the way the flow went before, and how the sales have been impacted on that. And the customers just don't come back. There is a light that they can go to, make a right-hand turn, left-hand turn coming in. That's not what their normal pattern was.
They just want to cross the double line and.
Exactly.
Yeah.
We're a convenience, in and out, you know, get quick back. So that really did impact the sales. We have another store that we haven't seen the total effects of on yet, and that is down in Cornelius. And Washington government is, or I'm sorry, the ODOT is putting through, Washington County is putting through specific turns, one direction, one directional medians, and they're going to take part of the land there to make it. So that'll impact traffic as far as people coming into our store. That'll impact parking. And again, the thought is, well, they can just go past the store, hang a left and come around, and we've just seen that that doesn't work. Then in that case, that's going to be an issue there, too, as far as trucks. But Washington County didn't really care to hear that part of the conversation.
Well, I understand that, that people want to take the path of least resistance, but they also want to take the path where there's the most danger for accidents, because I'm aware of a situation on another one of your competitors where people constantly do that, and it's a high accident area because they're going in the, they're not on the going home side of the road, and they cross the double yellow to try to get to the parking lot.
Right.
And the people are coming in the turn lane. It's just all gets, it's not good.
It's not. But as, as Betty had said earlier, you know, just looking at the traffic report, as far as the number of accidents for five-way intersection, you know, nine over the past five years is really.
Not.
I mean, you don't want to see any accidents.
No.
I don't want to minimize that at all. But for the amount of time with that amount of intersections and coming and going, that's really not a lot for that area.
Bring up some good points, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to testify on this matter? Okay, seen none.
A move that we continue this item until the 25th of August.
Second.
A motion, and second, to continue Legislative File 1404 to August 25th.
With the record open.
With the record open. Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Gile?
Aye.
Will be providing a staff report one week prior to the August 25th hearing. Thank you.
Well, if people want that, will they get that because they were within the notice area, or will we be sending them a notice letting them know that that's available?
We will, if.
Let them know it's available.
We'll let them know it's available. If they contact us with an email address, it's great, or we'll just put it on the website one week prior.
Did the three of you hear that? He said that if you left your email address, he will notify you, let you know when the staff report is available? If you can so kindly give him an email address?
Or you just look on the city website one week prior to the meeting, and you can read it there.
Okay, then we will proceed with the next item on the agenda, which is PC 14-071, a proposed 31-bed assisted living memory care facility located at 950 South End Road. Planning Files CU 14-01, conditional use. SP 14-09, site plan and design review. VR 14-01, variance. And LL 14-05, property, property line adjustment.
All right. Chair Kidwell asked me to go ahead and read the hearing procedures tonight. You've heard his little cough, so we'll preserve his voice for the deliberations here. And there's a number of public hearings tonight, and we'll probably repeat this a couple of times for each one, but we have three public hearings on land use applications. A staff report has been prepared for each application and has been made available to the public seven days before the public hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report. The quasi-judicial hearing procedure that the commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the chart on the wall over here. And anyone wishing to speak should fill out a speaker's card and give it to the planning staff before the hearing. Speakers will proceed in the order in which their card is received, and you should fill out your address on the card so the city will notify you of its final decision. For the public record, please begin all testimony stating your name. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain how and why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person must submit any written material while the public record is open on each application. Any written materials received by the city staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to the city staff in order to become part of the record. If a person intends for PowerPoint presentations, oversized poster boards, reports, pictures, or other exhibits used in their oral testimony to be placed in the record, copies must be submitted to the city staff while the record is open. If they are not given to staff, they will be, they will not be included in the record. Any person wishing a continuance to present additional evidence and testimony or to keep the record open to respond to new evidence must make that request before the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. If the Planning Commission makes a decision with which you agree, any issue that you may wish to appeal must have been raised for the consideration of the City Commission or Luba or both. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be deemed appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Now we will open the record for Oregon City File Number 14-071, or PC-14071, including planning files CU 14-01, SP 14-09, VR 14-01, and LL 14-05. A request for a proposed 31-bed assisted living and memory care facility. And while we're at it, why don't we just check in about ex parte communications? Does any commissioner have any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, bias, or any other statement to declare? And has any other, any commissioner visited the site?
I have none to declare.
None?
None.
I've driven by the site, but not specifically visited it.
I don't have any ex parte contacts, but I did make an extensive and lengthy visit to the site.
I have no ex parte contacts.
Does anyone in the audience wish to question any of the commissioners about these disclosures? All right, then we will now commence with the planning staff report.
Thank you. My name's Pete Walter. I'm associate planner, who's reviewing the planning application. Tonight, I'll be recommending that the Planning Commission open the public hearing. I'm going to make a very brief presentation, and then we will be asking for a continuance tonight till August 11th, because our engineering department has not reviewed the application in full yet and has some additional findings to make. That being said, this application was deemed complete on June 10th, 2014, and the 120-day decision deadline for the application is October 8th, 2014. The applicants have proposed a conditional use and site plan and design review application along with a variance request and a lot line adjustment request. The site consists of .91 acres and is comprised of two tax lots at the intersection of Amanda Court and South End Road in the R-10 Single Family Residential Zone District. So the conditional use application is required for an assisted living facility of this size. It is a 31-bed facility. The application includes the variance request from our institutional and commercial building standards in Municipal Code Section 17.62.055, in order to be able to place a vehicle drive aisle at the front of the property to access the front of the property within the front setback abutting South End Road. And typically, the standard would require that the building be placed no farther than five feet from South End Road, and in this case, due to the nature of the application and the type of facility it is, the applicant's requesting a variance to be able to use the front of the property as a port-cochere to access the front of the site. Also, a lot line adjustment between the two tax lots has been proposed. That lot line adjustment has not been finalized. The applicant has worked extensively to complete the application and has included a complete application with a transportation analysis letter and an amendment to that transportation analysis letter. They are addressing the city's storm water management requirements, and they will be required to make street frontage improvements both on South End Road and on Amanda Court. South End Road is a minor arterial road, so it requires a dedication of property over there in order to make a, a safe pedestrian and bicycle area. And Amanda Court is classified as a local street. So where a local street intersects with a minor arterial road, the city has standards for where driveway cuts can be placed and that sort of thing. In terms of parking, the applicant's proposal included various options for parking. Now, under the code, an applicant can use on-street parking to meet their off-street parking proposals. And following any dedications along the frontage of the property, there would be a combination of adequate off-street parking, on-street parking as well as off-street parking. Now, staffs worked with the applicant to try to provide off-street parking as well. And this site plan indicates where the various parking options have been proposed by the applicant. Staff has preference for the off-street parking is behind the building. It's a small parking lot, about five spaces, and it would be, oop, located behind the building, approximately 100-and-so feet west of the driveway cut over here. And so there would be two driveways on Amanda Court. One would be for the parking lot, and the other would be a one-way egress onto Amanda Court with the main entrance from South End Road being, coming in, going through the port-cochere or the carport, and then exiting out onto Amanda Court 40 feet west of the intersection.
That looks awfully close to that intersection.
Yeah, we are having our traffic consultant look at that, and there is a standard of minimum 40 feet from the intersection for a driveway in that case. The transportation analysis letter amendment does address this. We're looking at that and make sure that it's safe. Additionally, the site planning for the site must address any tree removal. Now, there was code enforcement action on this property during the, during the land use application. Trees had been removed, so a stop-work order was issued, and the trees were all identified. And mitigation will be required pursuant to code. Essentially, the way our tree protection code works today is, once you're in land use review, you shouldn't be removing any trees at all until the planning review is complete and the mitigation plan is complete. So the applicant signed, following the code enforcement action, the applicant signed an agreement to stop work, cease, and came in, identified the trees that were removed, and will be required to mitigate for all those removals.
Does this show where those?
It shows it, but it's kind of hard to read on the screen here.
The ones that they took out?
Yeah.
Because I did see that when I was at the site.
Right.
I was extremely disappointed, unfortunately.
Right. Well, we're working to make sure that those trees, tree removal meets code, and we'll be providing a clearer plan of that when we do the staff report next time.
And what happened to the house?
The existing house was demoed, demolished with a demolition permit.
Prior to land use?
Prior to land use.
Because the, a lot of the material we received says that the property contains a single-family dwelling, and when I went over there, I, you know, obviously didn't see one.
Sorry. Yeah. Yeah, we did receive several complaints about that and notified the applicant, and they have been working with us in good faith to address that, so.
Pete, do you have existing land use patterns adjacent to this?
Yeah, so surrounding area is primarily single-family residential uses. On the south side of Amanda Court, it's Zoned R-10 around there. This lot, or I should say, these two tax lots consist of a, sort of an L-shaped skinny tax lot which surrounds the main tax lot, which is the center one. The central tax lot is three lots of record, so it could be built on with three single-family homes. And I've spoken with people in the past about that possibility, but this property has been, this proposal is for assisted living facility. 31 beds, the idea behind this is that it's be a, regulated by Department of Human Services. It's proposed to be a memory care facility as well. It's not expected to generate a lot of traffic because the people that are being cared for aren't going to be driving cars. So your visitors are going to be the ones who are driving, your employees, and any personnel that may need to serve the site. So the overall parking requirement that we've figured at this stage is about seven spaces, which can be met in a variety of different ways.
Where are the employees allegedly parking?
Well, we'll need to figure that out.
Okay.
You know, we've looked at various proposals for parking, and we don't feel that burdening the street with on-street parking for all of that is a good idea, so, and we, we made a point of talking about that before, beforehand, and that's why we're going with the off-street as well. As a condition of approval, it may make sense to ask employees or visitors to park in certain locations based on what makes the most sense. So we'll be looking at that in more detail. We are also.
There's a disconnect.
Looking at the possibility with this application of doing enhanced landscaping, you know, we'll have enhanced landscaping in the front and the side of the property in addition to the existing planter strip. So there's going to be a fairly well landscaped area buffering the site all, on all sides. The rear setback from the building is about 65 feet, 10 foot on the north side, and then you have a setback of approximately 30 feet in the front to make way for the driveway. It's intended to be a fairly low-speed, low-impact, very quiet type of facility. The actual doors onto, into the building are primarily at the rear and at the front, and those would be secure areas. be secure areas. There have been questions raised in written public testimony about the staffing on the site, so the applicant would be available tonight to discuss how that is regulated by the Department of Human Services. And they provided a schedule for their staffing in their packet for how many staff would be there during the day and that sort of thing. It would be a one-story building. There is a mezzanine sort of an area inside that would be useful as an office space, but from the street, it primarily will look one-story, as a large one-story structure. I'll bring that graphic up. So, the front elevation is the top graphic. Bottom elevation, the side elevation is the bottom graphic there. The north elevation is on the top, and the west elevation is on the bottom in this slide. So, we do have some additional review to do. Public Works is still reviewing the storm water report. The transportation analysis letter has been reviewed by John Raplinger prior to the parking lot proposal for the rear. So, we're going to be asking John Raplinger to provide updated comments with respect to the second site access onto Amanda Court. And we will be presenting the staff report and recommendation at the subsequent public hearing. There's a couple of items that I'd like to enter into the record that we received. First item, which you have before you, is email correspondence between staff and Najah Santaraja. And Najah Santaraja and her husband Shen own the tax lot that abuts Amanda Court. They have signed the land use applications, and they emailed me with concerns in connection to a private real estate transaction between them and the co-applicants, Petronella and Daniel Donovan. And so, as co-applicants, this portion of the property is necessary for street improvements, abutting the property, so without a willing applicant, the overall site plan could not be approved, and we consider it necessary and absolutely imperative for this application. Even though the tax lot in question is a small, narrow strip of land on Amanda Court, it is absolutely important and vital part of this application because that's where the sidewalk and planter strip and driveway accesses will be crossing. So, if the applicants, if they as co-applicants were to choose to withdraw their application for whatever private reason they have, they have that right? But, that's up to them to decide. If they did decide to do that, we would assess at that point where we are in the process. They've asked that their comments be made part of the record, and so, we provide those to you, including the signed land use applications. And I believe that they have signed up to speak tonight at public testimony. The second item is a letter, sorry, from Shan Santaraja, addressing the same concerns. And they have identified themselves as the owners of that tax lot, 3202. They're respectfully requesting that the commission leave the record open for at least seven days, as required by Oregon law, and as staff has recommended, a continuance of this case to the August 11th meeting, we request the commission allow the record to remain open until 5:00 PM on August 4th. Typically, the way the planning commission hearing would work is that the chair and the planning commissioners would make a determination on when to close the public hearing, and that would not be before staff has had time to provide a staff recommendation and recommendation. So, I feel that this item can be satisfactorily addressed. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions you have at this time, but we are asking for a continuance.
Mr. Kito, I have a request of our staff.
Mm-hmm.
Could you provide to the planning commission in just whatever would be appropriate, a memo, as to when the pre-app was, when the demo permit was applied for, and when the, I think you already have in the report, when the application was complete?
This was a prior application that was submitted in 2013, but timed out on completeness, so we refunded the application and then it was resubmitted as the current application. So, I'll provide the date of the demolition permit issuance and when that was done as well.
Can you include the relevant information about the tree removal?
Yes. And then, I guess my concern is, I just don't think there's enough parking, so what the justification is for just six spaces on site?
Okay, yeah.
Pete, can you get an aerial photograph of the surrounding area to include that, so we can get a little bit more feel for impact?
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. So, at this time, we'll take public testimony from those who've signed up.
The applicant intend to make a presentation this evening?
Jumping right ahead.
The applicant is available, sorry. They would like to speak.
Does the applicant wish to make a presentation? Yes, come forward. I'm just trying to move the process along.
Do you have a card for them? Charles, do you have a, do you have a?
We should have a card for the
For the applicant?
Yeah, Petronella Donovan.
He's got to find it. It's okay.
For B?
So, you've got to have it in basically reverse order.
Ah, he hasn't been reversed order. There you go.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
And then, the next is the engineering people, so you've got to just reverse the things.
Set me up nicely. Appreciate that.
I saw you looking at them, but you were looking at them in a puzzled manner.
Okay.
All good.
Yeah, we're good.
Go for it.
I'm Petronella Donovan. I am the applicant. My husband, Daniel, is back there, but he always likes me to speak. And so, I just want to say a little bit about myself and a little bit about the project. I am from Oregon City. I grew up here. I went to old Oregon City High School and graduated from there. I worked at Willamette Falls Hospital as my senior year. While I was doing that, I also went to pharmacy school and got my pharmacy tech license and transitioned over to the old Olson Pharmacy, if y'all remember. I guess maybe going up the hill now, right up here. And I worked there since 1993. I represented the pharmacy throughout the state of Oregon. I've worked in assisted livings, in residential care centers, in memory care centers, in hospice care, in nursing and rehabilitation centers, worked closely with the doctors and physicians and nurse consultants, pharmacists, to give care to the specialized different settings. We built our first home in 1998, an adult care home, and that was right behind Willamette Falls Hospital. I attended Portland Community College in 2002 and got my vent management for non-Icu patients, so I was able to accept even vent patients. In 2007, we built our adult care home right on Warner Parrot, and that's where we live now. So, we have an existing adult care home, as you can drive on Warner Parrot, we're there. And this is right around the corner where we want to build this facility. In 2007, I also was on, asked to be on the board for the association for the whole state of Oregon for our industry. I represented our industry at the state capitol. I have testified before the Oregon State Senate, served on numerous committees like the education committee, activity-based rates committees, a rural advisory committee. Throughout the years, I have worked with residents with dementia and Alzheimer's, diabetes, two feedings, special diets, ambulatory and non-ambulatory, wound care, hospice, cancer patients, and much, much more. But what I really want to say over all of this, I really loved my job throughout the years. I consider myself the luckiest person on earth, and I tell that to my kids, too. We have the most grandpas and grandmas in the whole wide world. At the beginning of this year, I was appointed chair for the Clackamas Volunteers in Medicine Clinic right here in Oregon City. I am very privileged to work with the many doctors that we have there, many volunteers in nursing, and the partnership we have in this community. I couldn't think of a better place to open this facility than right here in Oregon City. This is my home. This is where I live. I'm a very active member of the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce. I am a member of the South End Association and on the Parks and Recs Committee there. I love our community here, Oregon City. I can't think of a better place for me to open this facility than right here at home. There are more than 37 million Americans that are over 65 and older. That number is expected to double, if not triple, in just a few years. We need good care facilities for our seniors. And I will end by this short statement. Having a place to go home is called a home. Having someone to love is called a family. Having both is a blessing. That's why I want to provide petro-memory care right here in Oregon City. So, I'm open for questions.
Questions?
What did you say your name was?
Petronella Donovan.
The reason I ask is because I forgot.
Oh, Bob. He's got a little levity already.
Your first picture.
We chose, just a side note here, there's bigger assisted livings, there's bigger nursing homes, and there's bigger, we chose the number of rooms. I own several of these, and it's not, I don't want it to be 100-bed facility, 200-bed facility. You can't control dementia patients. I want good quality care. I want these residents, I mean, when you get with dementia, I've taken care of quite a few of them. I become their mom, their dad. I become their sister, their lost loved one. I want those residents to have the same continuity with the staff, with the same routines every single day, where I think in bigger facilities, you can't.
How does this differ from a nursing facility, nursing home?
From a nursing home, in a nursing home, you have, which is huge for me, the patient-to-staff ratio. And what in a nursing home, you would have, you know, depending on the acuity of the care, you would have a nurse on staff 24 hours a day, and you would have, you know, depending how many CNAs, depending on what they can afford sometimes, depending on what they need. And how I would be different is, I, again, my patients, it depends. If you have dementia, a lot of people think, oh, my gosh, these are crazy people running around, and that is not true. These are not lunatics. These are not people, these are your family members, I mean, that have maybe forgot something, and they're back in World War II, or they're back in, you know, what happened on the farm, and they'll talk about their loved one. So, I would have staff, you know, pretty much going to what those patient care needs are. So, if that means more staff, yes, more staff. I will have regular nursing visits. I will have, you know, a lot of programs that come into the facilities, so they won't have to leave the facility.
What's your staffing requirements?
Well, in adult care homes and any long-term care, all of these settings are qualified and expected by DHS. And so, depending, it's very minimal as far as the state goes. You're talking about you maybe two staff even at night for a 31-bed facility like this, but that's not me. And if you go into my adult care homes, you only require your one per one, for five residents, I have four. Again, it goes on the acuity of the patients. And for me, it's about getting the best care for the loved ones that you all place in there.
So, a quick question on that. So, you have nurses come in once a day? I mean, who delivers medications that are needed, and how is that controlled? Is there somebody who's a registered nurse or registered?
Very good question. The way the medications are delivered is, they would, the family would have a choice. Usually, there, a pharmacy would have, will bring it in and then given it to a med aid, or they, the family could bring in that medication, but a med aid would administer the medication.
Okay. Is that state overseeing by the state?
Definitely, yes.
The medications and all that?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I was going to, Bob asked a question about the difference between a nursing home. Would a nursing home be more of a temporary stay where someone's being nursed back to health, where this is more until they're passing or something? I hate to put it that way, but is that kind of more like?
Right. They wouldn't have to move somewhere else. We would try our best, especially with dementia care. And dementia patients, when you move them from setting to setting, that's when they decline. They're used to one routine, one person, and usually in a nursing home, is usually when they, they'll go from like maybe a hospital to a nursing home to get rehabilitated and then maybe moved out to another long-term care setting.
And I've been familiar with dementia and all that. I know that sometimes the patients can get a little unruly. You said you do have four staff there. I mean, is it secured for people who want to wander off and who don't like weather hat?
This is very well, and matter of fact, I will bring the actual builders here. I've actually seen their facilities, and that's why I've chosen them. This is a code where you can actually get in and out, and a dementia patient cannot do those codes to be able to get in and out. On top of that, we will have staff, you know, at the doors. And another thing that I want to mention about the plan itself, I also speak across country on long-term care settings. And this plan right here, our architect, Eddie, actually made it, but it was, they've done studies on this and how dementia works. And what I wanted them is to feel free, where they can walk around, there's like a walkway all the way around inside the building, where there's no walls blocking or doors blocking them. They can walk all the way around if they want it to. Not only that, we also have a courtyard inside the middle of the building, where if they wanted to go outside, they are safe, they can't go anywhere, they can walk outside. Not only that, they can walk outside, we actually have it covered, where even if it's raining, because it never rains in Oregon, we have a cover deck where they can walk around outside.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have you presented this to the homeowners, neighborhood association?
Yes, I did, and they unanimously are behind us.
What about the adjacent neighbors? Have you held like a, just a meeting with them?
I did not, but I thought that's what the neighborhood association meeting was for.
But, as we all know, not everybody goes.
Yeah.
But they're notified, right? So, they could attend?
Possibly.
Damon, you have a question?
Part of my concern with the facility is that it's right on South End Road, and it's fairly close to the hill break. And one of the issues that, for staff or your traffic person or whoever, is the site distance for pulling into your driveway from those people coming up South End Road, because we've heard a thousand times about how fast people are going, and, you know, I'd hate to have somebody, you know, oh, there it is, they stop, they start to turn in, and here comes lickety-split up and over the hill, and, you know, and they get rear-ended. Additionally, and I guess this will be your planning people, I'm really concerned about the, about the possibility that somebody could wander out on the road. Just up, a few blocks up is King School, and a safety patrol kid with his yellow and his flag and everything, less than a block from the stoplight, got hit because somebody wasn't paying attention. I mean, I don't know how much more visible you can be. So, the flip side is, most of these patients are probably back in the days when they had to watch out for idiots in cars, and they know that sort of stuff, but it's, that proximity to South End is, those two elements give me a lot of concerns, so.
Well, our house that we have now is on Warner Parrot, and that's also a very busy road. In the years that we've had our adult care homes, I have never had one patient leave our facility. With that being said, you know, Well, our house that we have now is on Warner Parrot, and that's also a very busy road. In the years that we've had our adult care homes, I have never had one patient leave our facility. With that being said, you know, it could be, I can't say that it will never be, this one's more secure than any of my facilities are. This is top of the, you know, the art as far as lock and key, that nobody can get in or out without that. So we have that protection. And then on top, when they're wandering inside, I mean, those doors are open to the courtyard, but nothing, nothing from the outside, neither people can get in or out without those safety corridors right there. This is more than any of my facilities have. And I've never had one patient, one dementia patient, and in our facility, I would say maybe ninety-five percent of those are dementia.
You just can't remember.
I can't remember.
By the way, I see why your husband wants you to do all the talking.
Sorry, are you agreeing with him?
Yep.
Does he talk that?
He's awesome.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I would ditto exactly what you said, Damon. I have real concerns about the location of the driveways. I think that regardless of what our traffic people say and your traffic people say, I don't think that that's appropriate. I think there's going to be issues there. I'd also like to ask you to, a couple of things that would be very helpful. This site plan is kind of in a vacuum, and I would like to suggest that for your next submittal, that for the next meeting, that you do a site plan that shows the surrounding area, so we can see the house that's on the right and the one that's on the left in context. This is, this is very hard to see this. I took this with me while I was sitting there looking at it, and it's really difficult to determine how this fits in. I also would like to suggest that you look at the scale of this. I think it is quite a bit out of scale with the neighborhood and what you've got surrounding you. I mean, you're in close proximity to a lot of houses, and I would like to suggest that you look at possibly revising your design somewhat so that it is a little more contemporary and a little more residential, instead of, it's again, starting to look very institutional, which I don't think you want. You talked about it looking residential, but it's really, really, very, very institutional looking to me. The other thing I would like to recommend is that, I was trying to read the site plan, which shows the tree survey. You obviously have a substantial number of large trees on the frontage of the property, and I guess my question has to do with why thirty-one? Could you shorten this up a little bit, make another story, to make it a little less of the bulk and the scale? Because one of the criteria obviously is, is that it, it kind of fits in with the neighborhood, generally is what I'm saying, so that people do feel like, I mean, because it is someone's home. And if you live here, you would want it to look more, if you lived adjacent, you would want it to look more residential in appearance rather than institutional in appearance, because this is going to be somebody's home, obviously, as you said. So I would, I would, yes, I would make those suggestions. I, you know, again, it's hard to imagine it when you don't have that material in front of you to try to get a context of how this fits in. And obviously, we do want it to fit in. I think you want it to fit in. And then I think I would look, again, as Damon said, I have major concerns about the We've had some submitted information about people parking, you know, on the street, and I know everybody has the right to park on the street, but when you have your, we don't know where the employees are going to be. I was trying to, I was looking at your submittal, and you said you had day shift, you had two people, and night shift. Do you consider that four employees, or is that four employees on the, that are there during the day?
Again, it's for, it depends on the acuity of the patients. I mean, if they're ambulatory and they're able to do, and then it's different, it depends on the patients. I'm there for the patients, so whatever the patient care needs is what we're going to staff for.
So is this the, is this the minimum or the maximum?
That's the minimum.
Okay. Could you show us what a maximum might be? Let's just say, I mean, we're guessing as to what the people are, as you say, we're guessing.
That's an average kind of, because some people have a whole lot less, and I don't know how they do it.
Yeah, okay. That wasn't, that's what I was trying to figure out. I didn't understand whether this was the average, this was minimum, this was maximum as to, I'm pointing to the information in the packet that shows employees and possible visitors, so just for the record.
Page five.
Well, it's page one on there, but page five on your thing, okay.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Anything to add?
I mean, not too much more than what's already been added before, and I think that, you know, we've, we've had a pretty close experience with Alzheimer's patients, and we were pretty familiar with the, with the care or lack of in this community for that, for that type of need. It's really, really important, and I think that's a really, a great idea that you have. I echo some of the sentiments about the look being a little bit too institutional and not fitting in with the neighborhood. I would like to see something that does fit in a little bit more. Where my colleague and I might differ is that I might want to see something that's a single story as opposed to two stories. Still want to keep the trees, might want to lower the density, that density just a little bit, even though there's probably that much or more need. I understand that. I would like to see also the architecture, a different architectural style, perhaps a Northwest traditional or mid-century type style, that's a little bit more contemporary, something inspired by Richard Sondelyef, John Yon, Wade Pipes, Fennec or Bailey, you know, look up any of those architects, they're great. They're prevalent throughout the Northwest, and they make a really attractive kind of look. And so those are the things that I would want to see. And then also, as far as the parking goes, I think that there isn't enough parking, even though these folks aren't going to be driving or anything, the families are going to be wanting to come see them, and they're going to want to have a place to park. And I think that the neighbors are probably going to want to see the parking onsite as opposed to throughout the neighborhood on the streets. And so, but, but it would be great to have the parking kind of hidden away so that we're looking at building facing the neighborhood as opposed to parking lot facing the neighborhood. I know, maybe I'm asking for the impossible, but those are my, that's my wish list, I guess.
Just to add, you're getting the sides of some people's houses as you enter Amanda Court. You're not, right across the street, that's not somebody's, you know, their front door, so they won't be looking at a, at a parking lot. But, you know, the idea of the, I was looking at this, again, as it was on the screen, and I thought, you know, what if they've had the entrances on Amanda Drive instead of on South End? That would eliminate some of those site distance issues, and it might make it easier to make, if you want a little driveway, you come in one side and you come out the other, or you come in. So that's, that was just the orientation. I kept thinking, you've got a long, got a rectangular lot, and that's why I asked the question, Mrs. Donovan, about is thirty-one the magic number, or could it be less to shorten this up so that you have more room to provide if you absolutely have to have this, you know, the driveway?
We're looking at that. Not that thirty-one is a magic number or not, you know, at the end of the day, it's got to work for us to, for us to be able to run a facility. It is a business, even though I do it with all my heart.
Sure, we get it.
At the end of the day, it's got to work.
It's got a pencil. That's why I asked if thirty-one was the magic pencil number.
Yes, and so it's going to be hard for us to reduce that.
Have you guys explored the ingress and ingress and egress out South End Road? Have you looked at that at all? Just having a?
Go in Amanda and out on South End.
Just go in South End and out South End.
Yeah, you've got the intersection right there, Paul. That's part of the problem, you know, and as Damon said, that is, because I went down South End and came up to see if I could understand what you were saying about the little drive, and believe me, I was going way too slow, and people behind me were not real happy.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
So we have a card from, I'm not going to try to pronounce her name, Richard with RSG Engineering.
Now, you don't have to speak if you don't want to, but if you do, so.
I am the engineer of this project.
Please identify yourself first.
Yeah. Richard Georgescu with RSG Engineering, and I am the engineer for this project, and I don't have any kind of concern. The percolation rate is very well in this area, and I can drain all the stormwater coming from the roof on the back of the lot. And also the frontage improvement, we have dedicated some feet, and I can accommodate it. And also for the parking lot, I am proposing porous pavement, and that means I don't need any kind of stormwater facility.
That's good.
I mean, for me, it's easy one.
The, just real quick, the parking is in the back, the option two, I guess it is. Is it possible to add more parking spaces to that? I'm trying to find the drawing, and I can't.
I have to look on it, because right on the back, I have some chambers for infiltration. I can squeeze them and make it another shape, like a triangle, and probably add more parking space on the back.
I'm sure you heard that the parkings are a big question, so I'm throwing it back.
Yes, probably two or three, one, three or three, two or three. I can do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person scheduled to speak is Chad Valley.
My name is Chad Valley. I am the, I work for the builder on the project. I just wanted to hopefully at least speak to some of the concerns and some of the things that I've heard you guys discuss tonight. One, just to clear up the issue with the trees, there are, there were a few different parties, obviously, working on this project, and as Pete had told you, our initial application expired. So there was a period of time where we were trying to get the lot prepped for, so it was easier to, I guess, envision, and it was always in, the intention was always that we were going to mitigate the trees. And so, because we didn't have an application in, we started removing the trees. And while they were being removed, we were informed that somebody had resubmitted our application. So once we found that out, we stopped removing the trees immediately, and we notified Pete that of the miscommunication. And so, just like in the beginning, we still continued to plan to mitigate all the trees, whether they've been removed or haven't been removed. So that was a communication error between the parties involved in the, in submitting the plan. So it was not intentional. That's, I guess, my main point. As far as the surrounding areas, it is in a neighborhood right there, but it is on South End Road as well, and there is a fairly large church across the street. So we took all of that in consideration in the design as well as the location for the As far as the security of the building, the, that was incorporated into the design as well as the technology going into the building. So as Petronella described, there are keypad entries, which you have to enter in a numeric code for the door to unlock. They're permanently locked unless in coordination with the fire sprinkler alarm system. If that goes off, they open so that obviously people can get out without, you don't have to enter a code. But without that, every single entrance would require a code, or exit would require a code. It's also, as you can see up there that, or on the plan, there's a circular design to the building, so that in the front, where the main entrance and exit will be, there's a front desk. So there's, there's somebody on staff up there all the time monitoring the front door. That's also part of the alarm system, is every, any time a door is open, there's a panel that says what door was open, and the person at the front desk can verify whether that was a legitimate entry or exit, using the, using that system as well. Also, we wanted clear sight of view down to the, to the egress doors at the rear. So as you can tell, the hallways, you can see from the front of the building all the way back to those egress, which are required for, you know, for fire code and emergency exit, which is why there are doors on the back of the building. You can visibly see the whole facility. That was the intended purpose through that design. So as far as the security of the building, I believe that we've built everything into it that we possibly could to make sure that the residents are safe and they're well monitored and looked after, so. As well as the, like I said, the technology that's built into the, you know, every single time a door is opened, there's, there's a light that flashes and a sound that is made at the front desk to notify her that, or him, that a door has been opened. So we did, we are a residential home builder. That's, you know, we do both care facilities and residential homes. We really try to incorporate as much as possible, every aspect of a residential home into the care facilities in every way, from the materials we use, to the colors, to the, to the overall look of the building. We, I, we're definitely going to address some of the concerns that you guys have brought up on the style of the, of the building. And maybe, you know, from some of the elevations, it doesn't accurately maybe portray the residential feel that we're going for the entire, and I know the main concern is going to be from exterior, but it's both interior and exterior is what we typically will design the building for, because we've found, we've gone through the studies that show that the residents will have a longer life expectancy if they are living in a place that's not like an institution, like a hospital, or kind of cold and clinical. It's, it's something warm and feels like a home and, and not a neighborhood per se, but, you know, kind of more of a family feel. And so that's why there's, you know, one communal dining hall for everybody to meet.
Chad, we kind of covered this ground, and you're kind of amplifying the applicant's presentation.
Oh, okay.
And I guess what I'm getting at is that we need to allow time for the public testimony.
Sure.
So if you can wrap up your comments, that'd be great.
Okay, yeah. I guess that's it unless, I'm sorry, I thought I was speaking still on behalf of that, so I mustn't.
The applicant's time has expired, so we need to wrap up.
Then, then I'm done unless you had any questions for me, so I didn't, I didn't realize that, so.
Thank you. But you answered some questions I had, so thank you.
Okay.
I'm Edward Radulescu. I also filled out a card on behalf of the, speaking on behalf of the applicant, but I think pretty much most of it's been covered, so I can just answer questions later on if they come up.
Are you one of the consultants?
Yeah. I'm with EPR Design, with the design team. And we've noted everything we've talked about that was brought up, and we can address that if more questions come up.
No, we'll just look forward to seeing some, something.
Thank you. And the last card I have is from Naga?
Naja.
Naja?
Good job.
If I can just, for the sake of running the meeting with the time limits that we've all agreed to, or the time limits that are in place unless the commission decides to extend them, I think the applicants had more than sufficient amount of time to make their presentation tonight. So I'm not sure where we're at and who's speaking where, so I guess I'd prefer that we move to public testimony at this time.
Right, well, this is our last card. And frankly, I wasn't aware that the first three cards were all from the applicant.
Kept going with the same presentation?
Yeah.
Yeah, gotcha.
Thanks, Tony.
Hi, I'm Naga Santaraja, and I own the Pasol Tech Lot Thirty-One E0180320 located Amanda Court, and I've already submitted my request. We would like the commission to record this to be open for seven days, as required by Oregon law, and continuation of this to August 11th. And we request the commission allow the record to remain open until 5:00 PM August 4, 2014. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thirty-One E is, since this map doesn't show it?
It's the little L piece.
Over to the left?
There's a back and then a long.
Okay, all right. That's what I thought, but I wasn't quite sure. And so we have Ingra Rickumback?
Yes, I'm Ingra Rickumback, and I live on Warner Parrot Road, and...
And in the past couple of years, I've had experience with Alzheimer's with my husband. And he was in a facility that had just 16 beds. And I know I'm concerned about the parking here because I would go see him every single day. And it was hard, I mean, he was at the Springs at Clackamas Woods. And they had eight parking places out in front of the building where he was. But often I couldn't find a place to park because a lot of people do go and visit, the family that are there. And so, and I was concerned when I looked at the, the application with staffing that it said because I know my husband was really struggling when he went in there. And he didn't recognize where he was, so he kicked the door. Well, first of all, he broke the, the blinds because he couldn't tell where the door was. So he, he broke the blinds several times on doors. And they took him out into the covered area where he was supposedly safe. But he kicked the gate so hard that he broke the lock. And no one was able to use the outside area for a couple of days until they could get it fixed. And they called me and asked me to bring additional medication. And it's nice, thank you, it's nice to have a place in town that could take good care of the people with Alzheimer's or dementia. And I'm thinking, since it's close to my home, that it may be that I could volunteer there sometimes. But I just want to make sure that there's enough parking so that people can feel comfortable coming and seeing their loved ones that are there because they are loved ones and they need that care. And that's my concern, so thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others that would like to speak on this matter?
So my name's Carrie Casara-Hager, and I live at 914 Southend Road. And I'm sorry, I'm going to be nervous, so.
That's okay.
I live directly next door, and the experience that I've had so far is I'm very disappointed how they've handled this situation. I wasn't notified when they were going to put up the cyclone fence that opened onto my driveway, that trucks have gone in and out of my driveway. I complained and he didn't really care too much about, I called Empire who seemed to be handling the situation. Then they ripped outbuildings down, and one of these outbuildings happened to be my fence, so it actually was my fence, and so I have two dogs. They put up this little plastic flimsy, I don't even know what you call it, maybe a construction fence. And so for this far, this is how my experience has gone with these individuals. There is a great big sequoia tree in front, and I really hope they don't get to cut it down, it's, it's quite majestic. But this is my home, and this is where I live, and I just don't want this home to dwarf my home. I would like a fence built, perhaps commercial grade if they're going to do this, so that I'm not staring at them all the time. I couldn't get anything out of anybody about what the plans were. And so that's really all I needed to say.
When you say you didn't get anything out of anybody, what?
They won't tell me if they're going to build a fence, they won't tell me what the plan is.
But you, but you, had they told you it was going to be a, a memory home or?
They got this notice, that's how I.
You got a notice?
Yeah.
From the city?
Yeah.
Okay, but when you talked to everybody else, nobody was communicating with you?
Well, they told me it was going to be a five-bedroom residential property.
Five-bedroom?
Mm-hmm, yes. And so I had no idea that this was going to be a much bigger, dwarf my house, perhaps affect my property value, which is my concern.
Who is there?
Empire Construction is the only one I've spoken to. So it was the gentleman that were there ripping the building down at the time.
So you, you have contacted the city?
Oh, yes, I have contacted the city, sure I have, yes. I've called about the fence, about the barbed wire on the fence, about them opening the fence, about trucks going across my property.
There was barbed wire on the fence too?
At the beginning, yeah.
Oh, okay.
But I know that they took my words, but I don't know that they meant anything to anybody. But this is my home, and so I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others from the public that would, would speak at this time?
I move, we continue this. Yeah, we continue this hearing until August 11th and leaving the record open.
Second. Go ahead, Tom, you can put Tom down.
I need to do one second tonight.
Sure, sounds good.
Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
Mr. Mahoney?
Aye.
Mr. Espy?
Aye.
Mr. Maybe?
Aye.
Mr. McGriff?
Aye.
Mr. Gao?
Aye.
Hey, Tom, are you okay?
Yeah, okay. Thanks, thanks for asking.
Before we start the next one, can we go ahead and take?
You want to take a, take a?
Like three, that's all I need.
How about, we'll take a five-minute break.
Five-minute break?
Okay, then I will, I will get up then. Portland Metro Center Men's Center, conditional use permit CU 13-01. Site plan and design review SP 13-11. Lot line abandonment LL 13-04. And non-conforming use review LN 14-04. We have a staff report?
I'll just go ahead and read through the quasi-judicial hearing procedures again. A staff report has been prepared for this application and been made available to the public seven days before the public hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report. The quasi-judicial hearing procedure that the commission will follow is set out in state law in the Oregon City Municipal Code, and the hearing procedure steps are shown on the chart on the wall. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a speaker's card and give it to the planning staff before the hearing. Speakers will proceed in the order in which their card is received. And you should fill out your address on the card so the city will notify you of its final decision. For the public record, please begin all testimony stating your name. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain how and why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person may submit any written material while the public record is open on each application. Any written materials received by the city staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to the city staff in order to become part of the record. If a person intends for PowerPoint presentations, oversized poster boards, reports, pictures, or other exhibits used in their oral testimony to be placed in the record, copies must be submitted to the city staff while the record is open. If they are not given to staff, they will not be included in the record. Any person wishing in continuance to present additional evidence and testimony or to keep the record open to respond to new evidence must make that request before the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. If the planning commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue you may wish to appeal must have been raised for the consideration of the city commission or Luba or both. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be deemed appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. And now we'll open the record for Oregon City File Number PC 14-074, a request for a conditional use permit CU 1301. Site plan and design review SP 13-11. Lot line abandonment LL 13-04. And a non-conforming use review LN 1404. And this project has been going on for quite some time, but does any commissioner have any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, bias, or any other statement to declare? And has any commissioner visited the site?
The only thing I can say is I've missed a few meetings over these last five or six months due to operations, but I have watched all the proceedings on video on the city and am aware of everything that's been said by the developers as well as the citizens' comments. I may not have always understood all the intense detail of this, but I have familiarized myself with everything in case anyone's concerned.
No, I'm fine, I have no, no problem.
I have nothing to declare.
Nothing new.
I do not have any ex parte contacts, but I've been to the site more times than I care to mention because I go by it on a regular basis and always look at it when I go by. And I've been through the neighborhood, surrounding neighborhood on a couple of occasions to get a better idea of where some of the persons that have been so kind to come and testify before us, where they are located so I could get a clearer picture of the surrounding neighborhood.
Paul?
I also see the site regularly because I live in the neighborhood, but I have no ex parte contact.
Does anyone in the audience wish to question any of the commissioners about these disclosures? All right, we'll now commence with the planning staff report.
Good evening, planning commissioners, my name is Kelly Mooseburger with the planning department. I will breeze through the parts of the application that you've already heard about at previous meetings, and I'll focus on the new information that's been added.
Is your microphone off?
Is he waving?
No. Red light's on.
Yep, you just give, you just give a thumbs up.
Talk a little louder.
Are we on the right place on the screen?
No, we're not.
Okay, because I got the other one, and I was trying to go there. Oh, now it just went away.
There you are.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the location once again is 405 Warner Parrot Road. Zoning here is R 10, surrounded by R 10 and R 3.5, single-family or dwelling district. Just as a reminder, the criteria that apply, the use must be analyzed the same as a group home or a similar proposal that's nonreligious. The characteristics or circumstances of the residents may not be considered in the decision. And only testimony relevant to the approval criteria should be considered by the decision-makers to inform the decision and the findings. The proposed use is Portland Metro Men's Center Christian Recovery Program, which includes a new office, renovations to the existing church on the site, a new accessory structures and parking lot, new dormitory facility for up to 60 students and two staff, and consolidation of the two lots. What's been added is the non-conforming use review, which I'll get into later. Proposed office building, we've gone over the designs in previous meetings, so I'll just flow through these right here. One of the questions we've been looking at is density. The Oregon City Municipal Code does not have density limitations for conditional uses. So we look to the comprehensive plan for guidance there. We've measured density and compared it to neighboring densities and R 10 density, average city density, in various ways. There are some comprehensive plan policies that are in favor of greater density and, and variety of housing opportunities, and those are listed here. There are other comprehensive plan policies that may not encourage the proposed density. The applicant has proposed mitigation for the number of people on site. This includes spreading out the development over the site in three structures, complies with residential dimensional standards, uses typical residential building materials, small lot coverage in comparison to the lot size, six-foot-high fence surrounding the site, significant landscaping around the edges, limiting the direct access to the neighborhood along Shore Pine Place, public improvements along Warner Parrot Road. And staff has suggested additional measures as conditions of approval, including a good neighbor agreement, and, and closing the stairways on the side of the dormitory, utilizing the stairs for emergency access only, and to install additional landscaping. The revisions to the application since the last time we took a look at this is a non-conforming use application. The applicant has requested a determination of the legality of the day use of the site as a religious institution. The, and I'll go into the staff response to that next slide. The sanitary sewer proposal, after a public comment was made at first, at the first hearing in February, the city looked at newly available data on sewer capacity and found inadequate capacity in the sewer basin where the site is located. The city has since begun the process for a moratorium on new development in this basins and other basins in the city that lack capacity. I will let our city engineer, Alita Froman-Gudrich, explain the applicant's new proposal and the city's response to that.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's.
I said hi.
Oh, yeah. My name's Alita Froman-Gudrich, I'm the city engineer. And engineering has reviewed the application for adequacy of public services, including the sanitary sewer service. This development is in a location where the sanitary sewer system does have capacity problems, and it is inadequate to provide service to this development. The city is not approving additional flows to be discharged into this system until we do fix the capacity problems. We are proposing a moratorium that is in the process of being adopted on August 6th through the planning commission. The proposed development, we do find that it will be adding flows. The, the proposed 62-unit dormitory building as well as the office building. The existing building that's on site that's currently being used for day use, we find that that current use for the sanitary sewer service would be adequate to continue use for day use. But any additional development of the dormitory residential units or the build, office building would be adding flows to this system. The applicant did submit a proposal for mitigation of the impacts of peak flows to the, discharging to the city system with an on-site storage tank system. And the city has found that that proposal is not an acceptable method for mitigating the city's capacity problems in the gravity sewers that, that the system would be discharging into. There's also been a supplemental memo that was submitted today from KPFF that also does not address the city's inadequate sewer capacity of this particular system. So basically, the, you know, the findings are that the proposal does not fix the city's problems, that's what the city's tasked with. Storing the on-site peak flows is again, not a method that would fix the inadequacy of our system. And I don't know if you have any questions regarding that at this time?
Any questions?
Why don't we go ahead and finish the presentation?
Yeah, that's fine.
Just stay there, come back if.
The other two items that were added to the application was equal terms request. The applicant requested to be, to use the equal terms part of Ralupa. Our attorney has provided response to that in a memorandum, it's Exhibit 10 in your packet, and she's available for questions. available for questions if you have any about that. Also, the applicant stated that the city was not complying with statewide planning goal two by utilizing the new sanitary sewer data instead of the adopted sanitary sewer master plan. We find that we are meeting and complying with goal two. The city attorney, again, has provided a memorandum discussing that, and she's available for questions if you have any. The revisions to the staff report include findings for approval of the nonconforming use and responses to the other revisions to the application. The nonconforming use findings include, one, that the site was legally established. We found that the applicant didn't provide direct evidence and the city could not provide direct evidence of a planning approval back when the existing church was built. However, we did find building permits from 1961 for that, and we found that our zoning code would have required planning commission approval for a church in that, in that zone at the time, what we believe it was zoned at the time. But we could not find records. We don't have records from that long ago that are available. So we're relying on that building permit on letters from neighbors and then later Planning Commission minutes and files from 1976 and 1980 that refer to the church, the conditional use of the church. So we believe it was legally established. Another criteria for a nonconforming use determination is that the site is continuously utilized, that the use doesn't lapse for more than 12 months. We have evidence from utility billing, letters from, the applicant submitted letters from church members and neighbors discussing frequent and weekly, regular, church, regular meetings at the church each week up until 2012. The utility billing records show that there was no lapse in water usage. The current, current site owner came onto the site less than 12 months after it was vacated by the previous user, and so we've found that it has been continuously used. And then the, we do consider the current use of the site consistent with the definition of religious institution. The Oregon City Municipal Code definition of religious institution is a church or place of worship or religious assembly with related facilities such as a following in any combination, rectory or convent, private school, meeting hall, offices for administration of the institution, licensed child or adult daycare, playground or cemetery. Religious institutions commonly have various uses, such as those described in the definition. The city has accepted these various uses as falling under the umbrella of religious institutions in many other cases within Oregon City. In addition, the city has never set a threshold for the intensity, frequency, timing, or size of these related facilities and uses for religious institutions. The applicant's daytime use of the property as religious-based recovery may be considered a related facility according to the definition of religious institution. So those findings support the nonconforming use determination. Other revisions to the staff report include the condition, there were 28 conditions of approval previously. We've added one, condition of approval 29, which addresses the sanitary sewer issue, and that states all development that increases sewer flows authorized through these conditional use site plan and design review approvals is restricted until the flow-constrained sewer condition is remedied, and no building or construction permit shall be issued until the flow-constrained sewer condition is remedied. The applicant must show that the sewer condition has been remedied and that the public sanitary sewer service Like to enter this PowerPoint presentation into the record along with three handouts that I passed out to you earlier. One is a new, a public comment received today from Brandon Boyd in opposition to the proposal. Second is a letter from the applicant's attorney, Michael Reader, regarding code criteria, including density criteria and findings. And the third is a memorandum from KPFF engineers, which is the applicant's engineers, which supports the use of the storage tank for sanitary sewer The options before the planning commission today, if the nonconforming use is approved, the Men's Center may continue to use the site as a religious institution for its daytime use, as they currently are. If the conditional use and site, site plan, lot length adjustment combined applications is approved with conditions and the nonconforming use is approved, the Men's Center may construct additional facilities after meeting the conditions of approval and may continue to use the site as a religious institution for its daytime use. If the conditional use site plan, lot length adjustment is approved with conditions but the nonconforming use is denied, the Men's Center may construct additional facilities after meeting conditions of approval, but may not use the site for daytime use until it meets those conditions of approval for the rest of the application. And then if the entire application is denied, the Men's Center, the proposal, none, none of the proposed uses are allowed on-site, including the current use. And that concludes the presentation, the staff report. If you have any questions?
Are there any questions for the staff?
I have a question, I guess it's for the attorney. We've got four elements on this. Get that back on top of the slide. We've got a conditional use, site plan and design review, a light line adjustment, and a nonconforming use review. Are we supposed to decide these individually, or do we, because clearly we've already got a nonconforming use review versus everything else in the application?
You can, you can discuss them however you'd like. The applicant has requested that all the applications be consolidated in one hearing, which is what we've done, and so the ultimate motion should just include your decision as it stands. So if you want to take them piece by piece in your discussion, that might make the most sense. It's up to, up to you all, but the motion itself should address all the applications.
Okay, so when we finally do our thing, we'd say up on CU whatever, down on LL, sideways on LN.
Yeah, and, and I wouldn't say that this list is exhaustive of the commissioners' options.
Trust me, we're pretty exhausted.
We'll see how this all goes.
Okay. Thank you.
Jennifer, how does real look at the whole equal use aspect, look at density and the amount of use that's actually being proposed? So in other words, if you're looking at something that is 60 beds versus something that would be more in keeping with the underlying density of the zone, would that be considered more of an equal use, less of an equal use, or would that not, not apply at all?
I think you're sort of combining a specific portion of RELUPA with the overall requirements of RELUPA, and the applicant hasn't made an equal terms request specifically about the density question. They've applied for a conditional use, so you apply your conditional use criteria, and our concern under RELUPA is that you treat this group home proposal the same as you would any other group home proposal in the context of what the conditional use criteria require. So it's really your decision about density as you would apply to any other 62-bed facility group home that was being proposed.
And just for the record, RELUPA?
The Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act.
Which is federal law?
Yes.
Okay, just getting it out on the record.
Sorry, we're talking acronyms too much in the land use world?
You're talking her language now.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I, I thought that I had this sorted out, and obviously now I, unfortunately, Kelly, I just, the water got muddy. If the city has been able to determine that there was a land use application for a church, why are we looking at a nonconforming use review? And we're making, and we've been asked to make some decision about it, because if it was, as far as I'm aware, churches have always been conditional uses going back to the beginning of time in Oregon City's code, even back in the dark days. So if they're, if the city has found that, what's, what are we looking at that's nonconforming if the church is a conditional use permit and they had one?
We're using the nonconforming code because the church is not a permitted use, and so really we're looking at it as, you know, if a use that's not a permitted use in a zone has a lapse of greater than 12 months, then it loses its legal status. And so usually nonconforming cases are prohibited, uses are just not listed under permitted or conditional. In this case, it's listed under conditional, but the nonconforming chapter applies because it's a use that's not...
Residential.
Right. Well, yeah, it's not a permitted use in the zone. Does that help?
No.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Well, I think...
I know what a conditional use is, and if they've applied for a conditional use...
Right. In addition, we can't find the original approval, and there was no, you know, sometimes you can attach a timeframe to that.
Sure.
And so there's no expiration to this unless that lapses, and then it either needs to be, you need to reapply for a new nonconforming use if you've lapsed more than 12 months, and so they were showing that they did not lapse more than 12 months.
Let me interrupt here. Kelly's sort of in the hot seat on this application because the, the main planner for our, our application here is not in the office currently, so Kelly has stepped in bravely and, and done well, but I, I think the history of the site can be clarified a little bit. The 1960 zoning code, there, there wasn't zoning on this property that regulated whether the church needed to have a land use approval. And then in the 1970s, there was some evidence that there was an application for a conditional use that was never approved or finalized. And so the city treated this application as, you know what, we don't know if there's a nonconforming use because we know, we knew from the pre-application meeting that there had been some gap in the use of the property, and we didn't know, the city, that is, did not know whether that gap had extended through the 12-month period. And so the city requested a nonconforming use application to analyze all these different parts against the nonconforming use criteria. And so in that research, found the building permit that suggests strongly to the city staff that there was the required proposal because of, and that it went through a required process, if there were any, to obtain those building permits, but didn't have any evidence of a conditional use approval at that time because, as far as we can tell, there wasn't a requirement. And then later had, had the evidence of the conditional use proposal that was never finalized. And yet, through that time, the church existed based on the applicant's materials, the letters and support, and then review of the utility bills for the specific purpose of showing whether the use had continued during this, this one-year time period, as well as the letters, again, from the applicants and their supporters who did describe that the use had, had lapsed, but not for the 12-month period that would be prohibited.
Okay, so we have no evidence that there actually was a conditional use, but it was operating as a church, so we have the building permit process, and back, I can suggest that back in the day, they probably did not tie the land use stuff to the building permits, is what I would strongly suspect in the 60s. Probably Mr. Simonsen was here at that, at that time. Not saying there's anything against him, but just saying they, just, it's a smaller town, everybody knew everybody, and everything was good. So the conditional use permit is on top of the nonconform, so the nonconforming use portion for the record and the audiences for continuation as a church. Then the conditional use permit is on top of that for continuation of a church and this dormitory facility? Okay.
Essentially, let's just say that you denied the conditional use. You have a determination on the nonconformity. You know, if you approve the conditional use, essentially the nonconformity goes away, right, because you're approving the use. But we were trying to figure out how do you piece this together when you have this 61 building permit?
Right.
No record of it, but then you also have a 76 and an 80 conditional use, one that was denied, and one references a previous decision of which the improvements were never completed.
So it's expired.
So it's hard to ever find the original approval, but we know that it's been used as a church facility.
Right.
So the nonconforming status accesses the underpinnings for the conditional use permit that's before.
Yes.
And the staff suggests that you make a determination on the nonconforming use, notwithstanding how you decide to move forward on the conditional use and other land use approvals, so that whatever happens in the interim or with that, that combination, we know where the Planning Commission stands on the nonconforming use question.
I hope everybody else got that, too, because that was my reason for asking the question.
That was good.
Well, I'm going to weigh in on this.
Well, before you...
Yeah, don't weigh in. We're just asking questions. We're asking questions.
We're not ready for weighing in.
Yeah, no weighing.
What are we ready for?
Not...
Any staff questions?
Staff questions. We're not weighing in.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions for staff at this time?
No.
No? Okay, so we will proceed with the public testimony portion, and we'll take a statement from the applicant.
Oh, wait, I did have one before, while you're coming up, I do have one more question. I had a couple of requests from the applicants at the last meeting. Did you receive any additional information with regard to the site plan that I had asked for?
What were those items that you asked for?
My request was to look at maybe doing a sketch so that the facade did not look quite so institutional, and I had asked for them to bring that back at the next time we were going to meet.
We didn't receive anything, any drawings or sketches from the applicant.
Okeydoke.
We have it right here, Commissioner McGriff.
Okay. When you get there, we'll get there.
Ask and you'll show receive.
If only it was that simple.
Good evening, planning commission. My name is Mike Reader, R-E-E-D-E-R. I represent the applicant. With me is Rick Givens, planning consultant. I'm going to breeze through a couple of things and try and crystallize the issues that we feel are remaining. First of all, I do want to comment about what Ms. Brager said about Ms., I want to get this right, Moose Brager, Ms. Brager. She has done an excellent job stepping in, and we appreciate her efforts since she's been assigned to this application. So I just wanted to make that clear. First of all, we want to urge that the Planning Commission take action tonight. We've had many meetings on this, and we don't intend to offer any more additional evidence or testimony other than the testimony that you've received tonight and that you'll receive in our oral testimony. We're pleased with the staff report that's been provided to you for tonight in regards to the nonconforming use determination. We believe that that is correct. And again, we want to thank Planning Staff for the work that they've done on that application. They've provided, they've gone above and beyond and provided evidence to you for you to make a correct decision tonight, and again, we thank them for that. We only want to focus our, most of our attention on our testimony tonight on a couple of the code criteria. One is the criterion found in 1756010 sub A sub 4, which is the conditional use permit criteria that we discussed last time, and then 1762050 sub A sub 3, which is the site design and... site design review code criteria that's similar and relevant tonight. We've provided you a sketch-up of a an alternate facade for the for the proposal to make it try and look more residential in nature and break up the bulk and scale a bit more. What I would like to de-emphasize tonight and don't want to get we don't need to get bogged down in is the discussion, the proposal for the the storage tanks. That was a that was a proposal that we think will work. We think that you can make a positive finding that it will work. However, we're pleased with the condition of approval number 29 that has been inserted by staff and we think that if this underground storage program if you will doesn't work for city staff, we think there are other engineering solutions that we could come to the city with that will work and if not, we hope that the city moves forward quickly on a comprehensive solution to the sanitary sewer issues. So I don't think there's any reason to get bogged down in some of the back and forth that we've had regarding that issue. We're certainly happy to talk about that but we're not going to present on that tonight as well as similarly the goal two issues that were raised last time. Again, I think are somewhat moot should the planning commission go with the staff recommendations. So I'm going to turn a little bit of time over to Rick Givens to discuss the compatibility issues and the the alternative facade for the Portland Metro Men's Center.
You mean Rick Givens for that because that is G-I-V-E-N-S?
Not Mr. Givens.
No.
Yeah, that's your that's your alter. That's your evil twin, Mr. Givens.
You're using his time.
Yes.
The criterion that we want to talk about I think tonight is the one that where we get at all of the issues about compatibility. That's the one where staff also rolled in discussion of density. All of that's not specifically mentioned in the the code language. It talks about under 17.56.010 point A point four, the proposed use will not alter the character of the surrounding area in a matter which substantially limits, impairs, or precludes the use of surrounding properties for the primary uses listed in the underlying district. And that's a mouthful but what it comes down to is that the code talks about conditional uses under the provisions of 17.56.010 as uses that are both necessary for public convenience and also because they're the things that are needed in the community but also being things that deserve an extra level of scrutiny as terms of whether or not they fit whether specifically being proposed. That is, there's a lot of uses listed in the R10 zoning district as conditional uses. Golf courses, bed and breakfast facilities, cemeteries, crematories, mausoleums, childcare, emergency service facilities, residential care facilities, private and/or public educational training facilities, public utilities, religious institutions, assisted living facilities, nursing homes, and group homes. All of those things are listed as things that the code envisions as being things that can be located on R10 zone property if the specific proposal fits the character of the neighborhood and if the particular site is one in which it is reasonable to put that use. When we talk about the specific criteria here, the important language is the word substantially. That is, what we're looking at here, the code says you have to make a finding if you're going to deny under this criterion that there's something that's going to happen if you approve this use that's gonna really prevent somebody from making use of the property nearby for those uses that it's zoned for which a little bit of R10, we've got about four single-family lots that are R10. Everything else surrounding this property is R3.5. R3.5 is the predominant land use pattern. Almost all of the properties that would be impacted by the proposal are zoned R3.5. I would point out that R3.5, there's a good chunk of vacant land right next door to the subdivision that abuts this property on the other side of that property. That property could be used for as an outright permitted use for row houses. The R3.5 zoning district allows row houses connected for up to six units and if you look at the revised character of what we've given you in this schematic of a new facade, it's very much in character with what a row house development might look like both in terms of size, height, the appearance of it in terms of residential character of materials and about the same square footage and building bulk that you would find if you put five or six row homes together. So this is not something that's out of character with an R3.5 neighborhood. In fact, it's something that's outright permitted on properties and could happen on properties that are immediately contiguous to this neighborhood. So it'd be hard to find that this particular development would somehow change the character of the neighborhood such that those lots could not be used for residential purposes. To amplify that, we would note that this site is very large. We're looking at setbacks for this structure of 46 feet I believe on the rear. That's much greater than I think the 25-foot setback I believe it is for the R10 zoning district and that we've got side setbacks I believe in 35, 36 feet if my memory serves. So there's a lot of room between this proposed building and the adjoining properties. We're doing things like fencing, landscape buffering, and we've got a considerable distance that would provide some mitigation. So for all those reasons, we don't think that it's out of character with the neighborhood. In fact, there are probably things that could happen here if you will with row house development. You could have this size of development right next to you with only a setback of five or six feet. So it's very much in character with what's the surrounding use permits. Then the other thing I want to talk a little bit about is 17.62.050A3 which talks about buildings structures shall be complementary to the surrounding area. So this is kind of under the design review aspect of it. Talks about specifically whether the proposal now fits with the character of what's being complementary to the surrounding area and it talks about all exterior surfaces shall present a finished appearance. All sides of the building shall include materials and design characteristics consistent with those on the front. Use of inferior or lesser quality materials. Faisade or fairs or decking shall be prohibited. And the findings in the staff report, I think we agree with and would amplify how those structures will comply with design requirements as dimensional standards in the Oregon City municipal code with the conditions that are listed in the staff report. In fact, we're greatly exceeding the setback distances. Subsite is surrounded by one and two-story dwellings. We're going with the size of site that is similar to that. We're using materials that are similar to residential. We've got stone, we've got lap siding, all those types of things. Roofing is similar. The lot coverage is only I think we're allowed to have 40% or less, much less than that. And we're giving you now a new facade that is really in character, we believe, with the nature of what's going on on surrounding properties.
I don't I don't have any other comments but we are here to entertain any questions from the half.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
I know this is just a little sketch-up. What is the proposed height? Is it the same as it was?
Yeah, there hasn't been any change in that and
the site.
Yeah, I believe the overall length of the building is the same. All it's done has been giving some different articulation to the front. The overall height has not changed.
Just
Our plan is the same.
Refresh me on what the height was again?
Oh, I knew you were gonna ask that.
You could, okay. So while you're looking that up and so what's what do we think that is the backside gonna look similar to the front side? Because this says that's the front elevation so that's facing
Down the length of the property.
Facing towards the order of parents.
Southish, eastish.
So I would direct your attention not just now but also as you well you've probably looked at this before. Rick had a February 10th memo wherein he gave you a lot of the specifics including the height and I just saw it but I let me see if I can find it here for you.
It's okay. You can come back up and do that. I've got a binder.
It's approximately 29 feet and the maximum in the R10 zone is 35 feet.
Remember it's around 30.
Right.
And then I noticed your sketch based on looking at the interior design, the little conditions on each side is to enclose the stairwells.
That's correct.
Right.
As far as the rear articulation goes, you know, the planning commission wants that the architect indicated that could be done there as well. That's a major concern.
Sure. Any other questions for the applicant?
Do you, I guess just to ask, since this isn't on our screen, is there an extra copy that somebody out there might want to look at if they want to look at it? Thank you.
Thank you for the ultimate.
We reserve the right for rebuttal but that's the conclusion of our presentation.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your consideration and patience.
So at this time we'll take any public testimony. Do we have? I don't have any cards. So I have one card. If there's anybody else that wishes to speak, if you could please go ahead and fill out a card ahead of time so we can get through this quickly.
Hold after the testimony.
The card that I have is for Brandon Boyd.
Good evening. My name is Brandon Boyd and I live at Shore Pine Place right directly adjacent to the proposed facility and I'm the vice chair of the South End Neighborhood Association. But tonight I'm just speaking on my own behalf and behalf of my family and neighbors. I kind of entered this letter a little bit late today as I was collecting some of my thoughts and so I wanted to kind of share some of these thoughts with you since I knew you wouldn't have a chance to read them. I'd like the planning commission to consider some of the following points before rendering a decision on the proposed facility. I like to apply the common sense test when I take a look at any kind of a proposal at whether it's work or in the public sphere. And I think if you were to come to our front yard and have a barbecue, you know, a couple years ago before the the people moved in next door and then you were to come to a barbecue in my front yard now, you'd see a significant change in the character of the neighborhood. And that's with about 30 people being over there for day use. Now, let's use our common sense test and let's double that number. And what we see out there are, you know, people, there's a lot of noise coming from next door. It's a little worrying having your kids play in the front lawn when people are so close basically staring at your children. It's unsettling. And from what I've seen in the proposal so far, there's no proposed gate between Shore Pine Place, which is on the front of the church building, and the proposed dormitory. So it would allow infettered access between this facility and our neighborhood. So I'd like to see that issue addressed so that emergency vehicles could come in and out but also that it would remain safe in our neighborhood. So I'd like that that to be addressed in the conditions. I won't go through everything but I wanted to bring up the RALUPA equal terms provision and I think what that does is it puts religious and regular use on the same footing and says you need to consider these both equally. So I would say that test goes both ways and you should look at this as you would an apartment complex or any other facility with 62 beds in a 24/7 operation. Not leaving in the middle of the day and coming home at night but continuous use. And then also I would say that in Oregon City Municipal Code 1756-010B, it talks about permits for conditional use and it says you can include as a planning commission any reasonable restriction or safeguard that would uphold the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and mitigate adverse effect upon the neighborhood properties by, you know, so on so forth. You can read the rest. The average Oregon city population as brought up in the planning commission staff report is 5.5 people per acre. If applied to this use, it would allow for 12 residents on site. So I just wanted to note that. Also, the applicant mentioned in their testimony today that we should consider this to be similar to a R3.5 zoning density whereas the property is actually zoned R10. So I would, you know, make sure that you take that in under consideration as well. And I would note that the proposed density for the conditional use is five times the city average density. I say that that makes a significant impact on the neighborhood surrounding and anybody that would choose to purchase a house there in the future. So it does affect the neighborhood. Therefore, I think it's reasonable and essential that the planning commission mitigate the effects to the surrounding neighborhood by limiting the number of permitted residents on site and limiting the scale of the dormitory building by imposing additional conditions to the application in addition to what's already been proposed in the staff report that you have received. And that's all the comments I had for today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this matter? Okay, seen none. The applicant can make a rebuttal.
For the record again, Mike Reader. So first of all, we want to respond to the testimony that was provided by Mr. Boyd where he spoke about the character of the people and talked about using common sense and if RALUPA and the Fair Housing Act amendment mean anything, it's to prohibit local governments from using their discretionary approval authority to discriminate against folks who have disabilities and folks who are practicing practicing their religious freedom. They are those federal laws were instituted by Congress for the exact purpose of stopping that type of prejudicial decisions being made by by local governments. So I just want to make that clear. Second of all, it's not true. We are proposing a gate at Shore Pine. That's on the site plan. The RALUPA equal terms provision, that was a specific argument that we made regarding the non-conforming use determination. Again, we believe that's a moot point because staff has found that this is a legal non-conforming use. So we really don't need to be discussing early but RALUPA's equal terms provision at this particular juncture. And lastly, talking about density. Again, as pointed out by by Rick, there are no density provisions for this conditional use permit. There's no criteria that limits the density. And that makes sense because in a single-family neighborhood, you may be able to come up with some type of average density. But that average density can fluctuate over time as demographics change and of course there can be anomalies. You can have a family that has many more folks living in a single-family home and those folks can be related. In this particular case, this site could accommodate seven dwellings if it was to be developed as a residential subdivision. And if that was the case, you'd be able to have 15 unrelated unrelated individuals, disabled individuals, living in seven homes. That comes up to 105 people. Okay, and that's that's a determination that was made by the city years ago for the amended court group home. So when we're talking about density, you have to compare you have to compare what is allowed under the code. Well, first of all, you have to go to the criteria of approval. We don't believe that that density is a criteria of approval. But even if you did somehow find it relevant and wanted to decide on that basis, you need to take a look at the amended court decision which I believe is in the record and and do the math and 62 individuals living on site is well below the 105 residents.
The other thing I would point out is that just before us on the agenda tonight, I couldn't help but note that there was a proposal for a assisted living facility, same exact conditional use criteria, you know, category that we're applying under for the the dormitory facility and, you know, they're proposing 31, I believe it was, beds on nine tenths of an acre so about 40% or roughly the size of what we're talking about as far as the our site's 2.13 acres. So, you know, we're we're at less density than that proposal. If you want to go by by beds and that's what we're looking at here. We're talking at 60-bed facility here on 2.13 acres versus that one was looking at 31 on 0.91 acres. So we're not out of character with what is typically asked for for assisted living type of facilities. As I said, we've got in this case considerable setbacks where on that that site you can see that they were really crowding up the neighbors. So not that that one was necessarily approved.
So, not that that one was necessarily approved, I'm just saying that we're looking at a situation where we're certainly trying to do everything we can to fit into the neighborhood, and we don't believe the density is a factor, A, and B, that we don't think we're out of character as we discussed briefly. We're also proposing two and a half times the amount of landscaping that's required in this zone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go away.
I've got a question.
You didn't think it's that easy, did you?
No.
There's no escape.
Denise, you want to go first?
Oh, I just, I was looking at the revised design, and I agree with what you said with regard to a 31 beds. I count 32 beds on here.
Per floor?
Yeah, and there's two floors, right?
Yeah, you know, we-
So, there's 16 on one floor and 16 on the other, and I, you know, that's, I think that's a reasonable size. I don't, where's the 62 coming from?
I think that someone just counted the number of rooms and came up with the number we're proposing 60 and are willing to cap it out at that, so.
So, where are the other people supposed to be sleeping?
Sharing beds.
Are they bunk beds?
Multiple beds in each room.
I only, like I'm saying, I'm only counting 32 beds in here. So, if it's a 32-
No, you're talking about rooms.
No, I'm counting the beds.
That's a symbol for bunk beds.
Bunk beds, yeah. There could be up to four people per-
Well, it's got a slash, there's an upper level.
Well, I don't know what that, I can't, this is, it's blurred. I can't read this. So, sorry.
Count two each.
So, I only counted one bed per each. So, I was going to totally agree with you and say, yes, it's very similar to the other one because I only count 31, 32 beds, and that sounds reasonable to me. So, but you're telling me that's not 32 beds.
Well, what we're going by is the maximum use that they've ever had in their facility at their other locations. And there are times when there'll be considerably less, but 60 would be the absolute max. It's not a living situation either where you're looking at people, you know, who are, as in a residential facility care, I think it's the right language, as a residential home, that's the wrong language, too. There's a flux of people, so there may be 60 beds, but it is very unlikely that there will be up to 60 residents at one time. There's always some fluxes. As students of the program graduate and leave, there's some overlap there. So, the historic figure for the Portland Metropolitan Men's Center program is around 45 students. It may go up a little bit, it may go down a little bit, but that's generally what we're talking about.
Well, I think 45 is more reasonable than 62 or 60. So, just an opinion.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
Got a question for you, Mr. Reader.
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 Thank you.
With two Es.
I've been called worse.
At least I said, mister. As you referred to it, RALUPA, is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Explain to me the difference between, as I understand it, you're referring to equal protection under the law. And we're contemplating here a decision on land use versus the RALUPA law, which says nondiscrimination of handicapped people or-
Religious.
Denial of living spaces. How do the two come together? Land use versus nondiscrimination of a person?
Okay, well, I can certainly answer that question.
You've got 10 seconds.
Sure, sure. So, the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act was an act that was adopted by Congress and signed by President Bill Clinton that was meant to provide additional protections other than the constitutional protections found in the U.S. Constitution. Okay? And it is, it was directed specifically for local land use decisions, as well as institutionalized persons, meaning folks in prison. Okay? So, it kind of had two parts. So, it's talking, in fact, the impetus for the passage of that act was precisely for situations similar to this, which is when a religious organization attempts to locate a use or a building to practice their religion, there is often significant local opposition to that. And RALUPA was meant to make sure that not only were constitutional protections provided, but also additional protections that were provided in the land use context. If you didn't have RALUPA, it would be much more difficult to challenge the city on equal protection grounds.
But doesn't every American citizen enjoy that provision?
Yes.
That's equal protection under the law, right?
The case law regarding RALUPA, and there's different parts of RALUPA, the part of RALUPA that we have been discussing regarding equal terms is its own provision within RALUPA. And then there's other parts of RALUPA. But the equal terms provision of RALUPA says that if a local government is going to treat a secular institution, okay, a nonreligious institution, in a certain way, in a particular zone, then a similar or a comparator religious use has to be given the same consideration. So, for example, the argument that we made was that the R10 zone allows outright, without a conditional use permit, a neighborhood and community center. Okay? We believe that that is a secular comparator to the use that we're proposing, specifically the day use. I mean, that we believe is, I mean, we, again, we respectfully disagree with the city attorney on that. We believe that that is absolutely a comparator. But if you step back, we made the argument that we don't even have to go through the conditional use permit process because the neighborhood and community centers are similar to the use that we're proposing under the conditional use permit.
Then why made the application?
We made the application to avoid a fight in federal court. It was, that was simply the reason. We could have, and we have, you know, I've represented a team challenge in a case where we went to federal court. We were able to settle with the local jurisdiction because there was significant local opposition, and it was very difficult for the local government to make the right decision. So, we went to federal court, and we were able to resolve, we were able to resolve it. We didn't, we don't want to go to federal court first. We want to resolve it through the conditional use permit process. Frankly, we were encouraged to do so by the city, and we did so, and we worked very hard. In fact, I wasn't involved. Rick was involved, and we sat down with the city. We designed the proposal that you have before you with city staff. We felt that it was a good application. We come to the public hearing and get significant amount of opposition, more opposition than we anticipated. Most of that opposition, I will be perfectly frank with you, has to do with the character of the individuals. And I know, I would assume that this planning commission has been advised by their bright legal counsel not to make a decision based on the character of the folks that will reside there, the disabled folks. But the fact of the matter is, that's where the significant opposition comes from. You will notice a distinct lack of opposition based on the character of the folks who would live in a memory care facility versus folks who are disabled, struggling from drugs and alcohol.
One more question.
Yes.
When we get testimony from the neighborhood to the extent that they can't sell their property and it has to be taken off the market at the recommendation of the Realtor, how do you square that with compatibility and the use that you've proposed?
What I would say is that testimony, which I am not a Realtor, I'm not a real estate broker, I have no way to testify one way or another whether or not that testimony is credible, but suppose that it is. Suppose they're having difficulty selling the property. Let me give you an example. That argument is made all the time. In the case in Lane County, where we had the same arguments, same type of arguments, "I won't be able to sell my property," the folks that were in greatest opposition sold their property. They were able to sell the property. Okay? Now, if the devaluation of somebody's property, based on people's prejudices, based on somebody's disability, was a criterion for approval, then you'd have a real problem with your code. Fortunately, your code doesn't allow that. Okay? But other jurisdictions, you know, it's in other states where we don't, where they don't have the comprehensive land use planning program, it's very frequent that decision-makers such as a planning commission will be swayed by the local neighbor saying, "Well, there's a devaluation of my property." Oregon land use law rarely, if ever, I don't think I've ever come across, the criterion of approval in the code that allows the decision-maker to make a decision based on someone's value being, somebody's property being devalued. We would never get anything developed because most people would be able to say, "Yes, this is going to devalue my property." People don't like change, and I understand that.
Okay. Thank you. So, we will close the public testimony at this time. So, now you get to weigh in.
You're not going to weigh in?
Way. Get your scale.
Well, I don't think it comes to any great surprise to the applicant that, based on our code and the purpose of an R10 zone, the health, safety, and welfare of the residents that live in it, that I don't think it must met the test pertaining to compatibility and affect on the surrounding neighborhood. And I base my finding, my position on the testimony given by the residents in the area, I think the scale and intensity of the use proposed adjacent to a residential development is just too much. I don't have any problem with the use, per se. You know, I had no argument there. And that pertains to the RALUPA. My position is strictly on land use, and you've met the test in other criteria, but not this one. And therefore, I'm not going to support this. And that's my position on this.
Paul?
Oh. A lot of additional information that we've been given and that we continue to be given on this application. I do like the latest facade, as long as we have adequate articulation in the facade, and it's not just a kind of a faux articulation, it's meaningful architectural style, and I think that's, I think it's a great improvement of that. I think that this is a really important type of, as I do with the Alzheimer's facility, I think that this is also a really important part of the community. I think it's something that the community should provide. I have never been opposed to the concept of having something, this type of service on this site. Now, whether or not it should occur as a day use or whether or not it should be reduced to be more in keeping with the underlying zone, I think that's another question. And then there's also the question of whether or not there are adequate public facilities available to serve the site, and I think that's a basic tenet of conditional use permit, whether or not the actual use fits the site. That's both physically, you know, the size of it, and it also means whether or not, you know, there are adequate facilities there to serve it, both the stormwater and the sewage. And we found that right now, that's not the case. And I don't think that, I don't think that an underground storage tank is a viable solution. I think that kicks the can down the road in terms of what the overall city's policy is in terms of providing adequate public facilities to serve the site. So, I don't think that we should use that as a stopgap measure for serving something that, you know, can't be served there until an actual sewer system is in place. The other thing, the other piece, and that's been the one that's been talked about most at this hearing anyway, is the, is the density. And I'm assuming that we're accepting the nonconforming use, and I guess I'll get to that. But we can either look at it in terms of whether, you know, we can either look at density from the standpoint of this being an R10, which it is, or we can look at the R3.5 density, which is the typical surrounding neighborhood. I mean, I come up with 12, around 24 units for an R3.5, and so I'm really looking more towards having this, you know, cutting the amount of use in half from 60 to 30 to, you know, 25 to 30 people if we were to approve it.
24 units would probably be 48 people.
Right.
So.
Right. If you were to have two people per unit, like they're-
If they have two and a half per unit, that's, they're two and a half, just-
And that's being generous. That's assuming that you were going to have something that's compatible with 3.5 neighborhood, even though this is zoned R10. And so, usually, you know, the planner looks at the property that is before them and the zoning of that property, and they look at the density and all the things that are available to them based on what that underlying zone is. So, if we want to go R10, then that, of course, is significantly lower. And I think that maybe we ought to look at that, too, because the comprehensive plan clearly calls for a difference of uses. We don't look at the idea of having a monochromatic density throughout the entire community. We have a, we look at a variety of different types of uses and rents to make housing available to different types of people in different demographics. So, I'm still on the fence between looking at densities based on R3.5 or based on R10, which this underlying zone is. Then we go to whether or not the use is a nonconforming use.
Yep.
It appears that really, I mean, I guess it's really difficult to tell whether or not the nonconforming status continues because of the time at which this use started. But if you were to look at the most recent discontinued use, it doesn't seem like that use has been discontinued. It seems like it's been going for-
You're speaking of the church.
I'm speaking of the churches, right. So, I would say that as far as the nonconforming use goes, that this has been a church use, and it hasn't really, there isn't really any evidence in the record that I have seen that that use has been discontinued for any more than a year as per the code. So, I think that's, as far as I'm concerned, I think that that use continues. I really think that this is a conversation regarding degree in the amount of density that the planning commission tonight is willing to allow this use to continue as. And right now, I'm on the fence between the R10 density, which would be, and I know that those are not cited as being specific code requirements, but I think that those are starting points, are yardsticks, that the conditional use permit criteria are broad enough to allow. So.
Well, I'm, yeah.
That's where I am.
Yeah. I have similar, not concerns, but I agree with what you said. I do like the revision to, even though it's a rough sketch-up, I would like to see more detail for the site plan and design review because there's always a jillion conditions that get attached to it, and I'm not at this point, because of the concerns of the community, I would like to have more detail returned to us as part of our approval of findings because I'm not prepared to adopt all the findings tonight. I hate to do that, but there's so many things going on here. So, I like, I like this.
Just one point declared. The record's closed at this point in terms of new drawings or we need to work within the-
Well, this got in the record before we closed the public hearing.
Correct, that did, yes.
So, yeah, so I'm saying more articulation of this like we would be approving it for site plan and design review.
That would be-
Jennifer's-
Yeah.
Well, why is it new information? If this is going to be the new design-
That's the new information you get. There is no, the record's closed.
This is the only new information we're going to get?
It came in tonight.
Well, I agree. And I said, what does the back look like? Because we've got people who live on the front and live on the back. I-
He'll draw you a picture, just like that.
I appreciate it. I would like him to draw me a picture.
Just like that.
Yeah. I would, I agree with you. I think the only way that I could even consider recommending a finding of approval is if the amount, the occupancy is reduced because I don't see how 62 is really appropriate based on the conditional use permit criteria. So, I would like to, I agree with what you said about that. I also very strongly feel that the condition regarding the good neighbor agreement needs to remain in, and I base that on my own experience with working within that process. And I think that the better start we have on getting to Taunt in the neighborhood, the better this will be. And I also- And I also would like to see a review after the first six months, a preliminary review by staff after the first six months of occupancy, when and if that happens, and they report back to the planning commission, and I would like to see a review, a yearly review. We have, have experience and precedent in doing this to other conditional use permits, and I don't see that this is any, any different than that. I think that in order for everybody to get along, communication needs to be open, and if there's a good faith effort to show that people are talking with each other, and I don't mean just a neighborhood meeting with the South End neighborhood, but you, a meeting with your adjacent property owners, and you can invite other people in the South End area, but that needs to get, that needs to get resolved right away and get people talking, because, you know, as Teddy Roosevelt would say, and, and, Mr. Roosevelt, his cousin, would say, you know, "We only have to fear, fear ourselves." And let's make sure everybody's talking to everybody. I find talking really helps. I would say the only other concern that I have is that there be, as was mentioned by the applicants, that there's adequate landscaping. I had a concern earlier about the location of the garden area being right up against the rear of somebody's property line, and if that can be relocated to a more suitable location, that would probably go a long way to making those people feel better.
Damon?
Well, yes, I'll just start out by saying I don't give a rat's patootie who's going to be there. I mean, it doesn't matter to me one way or another. But going off of what Mr. Reader said, community center is not someplace that people spend overnight. So it isn't commensurate use, what you're proposing. So what I, what I see this as is, is a hotel with a restaurant in the parking lot. I mean, it's rooms that people stay at for a short amount of time, they then walk out of that building to another location to eat meals. That is commensurate to, you know, a Shiloh Inn with, you know, Denny's in the parking lot, or whatever. So, and I, you know, and, and if you want to say, oh, that's, but there's programming that happens, which doesn't happen in hotels, well, then the other end side of that is, it's a Boy Scout camp, and that's still not an appropriate thing to have in the middle of this location. So the, you know, the work that's gone into making this, you know, a better place for people in the neighborhood visually, the landscaping, the redesign, the sewer work, but, I mean, that's all wonderful, but it's still a hotel with a restaurant in the parking lot, and that's not what this is. So, you know, it's just not what, what, you know, I see as appropriate for, for R-10 or, you know, R-3.5. Although under the R-3.5 argument, I think 60 is the right number, because it's 2.5, which is the, you know, American family. If there's 24 houses, that's 60 people. So the number works out, the redesign works out, but, you know, I just, I don't see, I don't see how this fits with the general, you know, environment of, of the neighborhood. As far as the non-conforming use, I got no problem at all with the continuing of the day program. It makes sense, it's what you've been doing. I don't even see how we could deny it based on the, the record that you've given us. So from that aspect, you know, I think, you know, it's, in, in that aspect, I guess I do get to look at what's happening and who's there, and I think it's very appropriate, and it's a very good program, and it, it needs to continue. I just have a really difficult time looking at the overnight, all the additional work that's going into that. You know, trying to envision what it would look like from the street, I think it's a good, good plan. It's just not the right place. So I'm trying to figure out if I can or should reconcile that aspect of, of my thinking. That's where I'm at, I think, you know. Hey, you said from day one, don't look at this as, as anything other than any other usage. And so I've been thinking, Boy Scout camp, and then it kind of, after doing a little traveling, you realized it's a hotel with a restaurant in the parking lot, so I'm not sure how I can break that gestalt in my head.
Tom?
Hmm. How long's, when did we start these hearings? January?
February.
Decades ago.
Okay. I think the applicants have eloquently and clearly and consistently stated their case. And while I don't have all the notes from all the meetings, I, I took copious amounts of notes. I know them quite well, because there were so many residents here. And so I, I think that some of those residents' arguments have been equally eloquent, and for me, more convincing in their concerns. And while I could go into the detail that Bob and Damon and everyone here has, I don't think I need to do that. I think I agree with everything that's been said, and I think I'll leave it at that. I, I understand the residents' concerns.
Okay. I would, I would say I probably agree most with the comments Damon made. As I've spent way more time thinking about this proposal than I would like to over the last several months, I think we're, we're dealing with a lot of linguistic gymnastics here, trying to convince one side or the other side of terminology. It's real clear to me that this facility, this property's been used as a church for the last 40-some years, and that's what it was, and the building is still a church. And I think a church or church-related use of the property is certainly appropriate, given that, even if it didn't have a, a formal land use approval, just by the fact that it was functioning as that, for that purpose for those many years, you could say it was like a common law marriage to the property. Obviously, the community accepted that use there. So when it comes to the continued use, and I, I think it's, it's probably debatable one way or the other, depending on how you look at that, the, the use is continued in the sense that it's still a religious use. I would argue that the religious use that's taking place now is significantly different than what it was when it was functioning as a Assembly of God church. But be that as it may, I, I would agree with Damon that the day use that is occurring now is an acceptable use based on the history of the, the property. Where I, I have a difficulty is exactly where Damon's at, is that introducing any kind of group residency on this site seems completely inconsistent with the historic church use of the site. If, if the applicant were proposing a rectory for the pastor, I, I think that would be a fairly acceptable proposed use for the property. But regardless of whether this is religious activity or not, having anywhere from 30 to 60 people living there overnight is completely inconsistent with the history of this property. It's never had a overnight function to it. So there, there is no history on this site, and I, I don't believe that the residents have any expectation that there should be residents living on this site. So I, I have a, a problem supporting any dormitory use on the site at all. And I, I see it very much as Damon does, that this is like putting a hotel with a community center, or not a community center, a convention center next to it, where you're having people living there and attending functions during the day. I would, I would support the continued non-conforming use on a daytime basis only, but I, I would not be prepared to support the dormitory use for the property. We have a, a motion? Any further discussion?
I think we've said everything that can possibly and reasonably be said.
How about if we start a motion on the non-conforming use? And then we make a vote on that, and then we'll make a motion on the conditional use.
That's fair enough.
Does that make sense?
Are, are we able to do that?
I think, why don't we do a single motion on the application, which is all of these applications?
Okay.
And you try to phrase it, and if you'd like assistance or staff would like clarification, maybe that's a better way of putting it.
No, you had it right the first time.
If staff would like clarification, then...
Yeah, it's fine.
We'll request it and see if the language works.
You had it right the first time, assistance.
I'm going to make my very first motion.
Uh-oh.
So, young lady, you're going to have to help me through this.
No, I don't think that was your first motion.
I moved at the application, where the men's metro center has submitted, be denied on the basis of the findings that have been discussed by the planning commission. And that's it.
I second it.
That doesn't address the non-conforming use.
No. What's been applied has been all four of the applications, or all three. That's, and that was the motion, deny the, deny the application as submitted. And it includes the non-conforming use and the conditional use and whatever else goes along with that. And I'm putting it into a package.
All right.
And simplifying the process.
And I second Bob.
Okay, so it's been made in seconds.
So we have a, a motion and a second.
Yes. So the motion is to deny all four requests.
Is that, is that your motion, Bob?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Espy?
Let me ask a question. We say, we agree with the motion.
Then you would say yes, and all four items would be denied.
Yeah.
If you say no, then all four items are still up for an additional vote.
Well, I'm going to say no, because I want to have another vote.
Me, too.
I think we're confused.
That is, that is correct. If the motion fails, there will be the opportunity for another motion.
Right.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
The motion passes...
Okay, then we don't.
We're done.
We're done.
Start over.
Okay.
Commissioner Espy?
No.
Commissioner McGriff?
No.
Commissioner Mayby?
No.
Commissioner, Chair Kidwell?
No.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Kyle?
Aye.
Motion fails. 42K.
Let's start over.
I'd like to make a new motion. We're just waiting to give Kelly a chance to catch up.
Yes, we can go slow.
Three people writing.
Listen now when you're ready.
Slow mo.
Okay. The new motion is that we deny CU 1301, SP 1311, and LL 1304, and approve LN 1404.
I don't have the screen. What numbers are those? Since I don't have the numbers up here, is that...
So essentially, the motion was to deny the conditional use permit, CU 1301, the site plan and design review request, SP 13-11, and the lot line abandonment, LL 13-04, and approve the non-conforming use review.
Okay.
LN 14-04.
Correct.
Okay.
And I would like to make a friendly, is, is the good neighbor agreement still in your conditions?
It's in the conditions, but it's...
I would like to add that as a condition for the non-conforming use approval.
I do not accept that amendment.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I missed that. What happened?
He's, I asked for a friendly amendment to add the good neighbor agreement.
And I didn't hear the response.
And he said no.
Oh.
Didn't sound too friendly to me.
No, he wasn't very, he wasn't very friendly, but I...
She was friendly, he wasn't.
Okay, yes, that's what it was, yes. I would, I would like to know why you don't like that?
Because they've been operating without it, and there are things in place for them to continue to, if there's problems, they can, the neighbors can bring them up.
Bring them up with the city?
To them, to the city, to many other ways of, I don't see that...
Well, the, the, the good neighbor agreement was specifically related to the conditional use, not the non-conforming use.
Yeah. I mean, if there was, if there was going to be a major change to what's been happening, then I would agree with that, but this is what they've been doing for the last year.
And the, the applicant does have an opportunity to come back with the, a new application in which they could propose to include that as part of their application.
Well, they were not in favor of it.
Right.
But I am in favor of it.
But that was not part of the non-conforming use.
I, I agree. So I will just make a, a friendly suggestion that, that everybody do whatever they can to start talking to each other.
Yeah.
Can I ask for clarification?
Yes.
In the non-conforming use for, to be used as a religious institution for its daytime use, currently from, that we had reports from residents that the, the counseling was going on, and there was people coming and going, does that include that still at this point?
Yeah, that's specific with the non-conforming sport.
Non-conforming uses.
Okay, so I'm sorry. We had a, we had a motion?
Yes, I did second his motion.
You did second it.
Yes, I did. In a friendly way.
As always.
Yeah.
Okay. Can I call the vote?
I'll call for the question.
Yeah.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Kyle?
Aye.
So will you be returning to us with findings?
We would propose to bring back findings to the next planning commission meeting on July 28th.
Okay.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay. Man, we're not done yet. We still have more.
I know, but Dairy Queen's already closed, so our opportunity for Peanut Buster parfaits is over.
Unless you've had somebody pick one up and put it in the freezer for you.
Of course. Did I think of that ahead of time? No.
You know, you should never do that.
They don't really taste as good.
You should never, they never look as good. You would never want to eat anything like that if you looked at it after it's been in the freezer for a while.
I had, I had one last week, I had to put it in the freezer.
Those slow me down, it's ice cream.
Okay, we're, we're going to continue.
We're moving on.
The next item on the agenda is PC 14-073, proposed wireless communication pole on the McLaughlin Elementary School property, which is located at 19230 South End Road, planning files CU 13-03, conditional use, and SP 13-22 site plan and design review.
For the last time this evening, we will go through the rigmarole.
Do we really have to do it again?
I am not sure that...
All these people were here. Does anybody want us to read it again?
Has everyone been, been here, because...
Does everyone want to hear the last...
I will just give you a very, very brief reminder that you have to meet the raise it or waive it standard if you plan to appeal any issue before the Land Use Board of Appeals or the City Commission. And we will ask if there have been any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, bias, or any other statements to declare, and has any commissioner visited the site?
I haven't been to any parties. I haven't.
You what?
I haven't been to any parties.
That's not, that's not the question. Have you been, have you been to the site?
No, I have not. No, no, no.
No.
Yes, I had an extensive site visit, as I stated on the previous, at the first application, did those on the same day. I was there for about a half an hour. But I did not speak with anyone.
But I did not speak with anyone.
Paul?
We visit the site frequently, on walks or whatever. We live right in the neighborhood.
And I'm familiar with where the school is, but I have not visited the site lately.
You should.
Does anyone in the audience wish to question any of the commissioners about these disclosures?
Although, I will disclose that my wife's a school district employee.
Nobody wants to ask me what I saw while I was out there, so, thank you.
Okay, so, we have a commission staff report?
Thank you, Chair Kidwell. Again, my name's Kelly Moosberger, I'm with the Planning Department. I reviewed this application for conditional use for wireless pole at 19230 South End Road, and site plan design review. The site is at John McLaughlin Elementary School. It's approximately 11.8 acres in size. The school campus is surrounded by single-family residential properties near the edge of the city limit. The applicant, as required, did provide a radio frequency analysis of alternative locations for the wireless pole. They plan to present that information to you, so I'll leave that to them. The pole is proposed to be located between the school and the softball field. It would displace one existing tree on the property. I took this photograph a few weeks ago. The tree in question is the one in the middle of the photo, that small shed. The small shed shown there would be replaced with a larger accessory structure within the lease area, within AT&amp;T's lease area. The lease area on the site, shown here next to the driveway turnaround, is 55 feet by 30 feet in size. Closer up view shows that it includes an equipment shed, another accessory structure, the pole, fence surrounding all of that, landscaping around the fence, and then a little bit of new pavement to connect the site, or the lease area to the existing path. The applicant provided drawings which show the design of the pole disguised to look like a fir tree, and showing the cedar fence surrounding the lease area. The building is proposed to have a stone aggregate finish, similar to that of the school building.
You mean CMU? Or split face concrete, is that what we're talking about?
No, it's...
It looks like tilt-up of a sidewalk, an aggregate sidewalk.
As required, the applicant submitted renderings of what the pole would look like from various locations surrounding the site. So here's from Salmon Berry Drive, which is directly adjacent to the school property, from South End Road pulling into the parking lot for the school, from the southeast, and then again from South End Road on the backside of the school. The pole itself is not visible, but it appears that parts of the antenna may be visible.
Yep, that's what we can see.
The wireless pole is a conditional use in the R10 zone, so the applicant has turned in the application and addressed the conditional use criteria. Those criteria are that the characteristics of the site are suitable for the proposed use, considering the size, shape, location, topography, existence of improvements, and natural features, that the proposed use will not alter the character of the surrounding area in a manner which substantially limits, impairs, or precludes the use of surrounding properties for the primary uses listed in the underlying district, and that it meets goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. The one policy that we found applied in this case was 11.7.5, which is to maintain and enforce the cell tower ordinance, adopt, support, and encourage innovations in reducing camouflaging or screening cell towers. Staff found that the applicant met these conditional use criteria. Other review criteria that apply in this case for site plan design review and Chapter 1780 for wireless communication facilities, the height of the tower is 75 feet, which is maximum for cell towers in residential zones. The setback requirements are met on all four sides. The setback is 81 feet, that's the shortest setback, and that's to the adjacent residential properties on Salmon Berry Drive. The applicant submitted structural calculations showing that structural requirements are met, federal radiation emission standards are met, landscaping and screening requirements are met, tree mitigation. The site plan shows that one tree is to be removed. The applicant didn't provide any responses to this code section, so we don't know, staff doesn't know what size the tree is, and therefore, how many trees need to be planted to mitigate for the removal of that tree, so we've added a condition of approval for that, that we get that information, and that they plant the required mitigation trees on the school property. In addition, there are several large old oak trees on the property nearby, and a few of the public comments that were submitted did address these trees wanted to see them protected and not impacted by the pole. Our code requires that any trees within construction areas or near construction zones that are to be protected need to be protected during construction by construction fencing, and then a covenant needs to be recorded to permanently preserve that tree. And so what the condition of approval says is, if any of those oak trees are within the construction zone vicinity, then those criteria would apply. We're not sure at this point if the oak trees are close enough to be impacted.
There's the roots.
The noise requirements, we've also included a condition of approval. The applicant found that a noise barrier would be required in order to meet our standards, and recommend proposed noise barriers on the north and east sides of the equipment shed, and along the fence, and so we've required that that be put in place, should this be approved. So in conclusion, we recommend approval with those conditions and the other conditions in the staff report, and enter this staff presentation into the record. Any questions?
Yeah, I'm just curious, is the design of the antenna intended to look like a tree?
It is. That's the mitigation that's been proposed in order to make the pole a little bit more compatible with the neighborhood.
Those are just attachments?
I'm not exactly sure what material...
It looks like a tree.
I was gonna say, someone who sells imitation trees, I was trying to figure out, 'cause usually out in the moisture, those kinda fall apart. I wonder if this is metal with some kinda material that...
Looks like the Christmas trees you buy at Kiemer, that you stick, put the sticks in.
I'm sure the applicant can tell us.
There is a cell tower that is adjacent to the Rolling Hills Community Church along I-205, but the only difference is that that is a very large rural property, and there are no houses surrounding it, but they didn't try to make it look like a tree.
Does it have tree stuff on it, or is it just brown?
It looks kinda like a big cross.
Yeah, it was in the midst of a bunch of trees.
Yes, it's near a bunch of trees, yes.
And I would go by, I'd see one tree disappear, and then another one would disappear. I guess, I think they're having probably a frequency problem, because...
Yeah, there's not as many trees as there were, which is unfortunate.
Is there any map of the area that shows the closest, how many towers are actually in that area, or how close this is to other ones?
In the applicant's presentation, I believe they are going to address that.
Okay.
Did you say that they, well, I guess, let me ask the question, 'cause I think you answered this. There was nothing in the submitted material that showed why this location, why it needs to be in a residential zone, as opposed to someplace else where it's not going to be near somebody's house, 'cause that's probably my biggest concern.
And is AT&amp;T willing to co-locate if we do approve it?
Well, they said that.
So that we don't have a farm of...
We require that, and we've met that requirement.
I just, I feel like I'm having deja vu with a previous cell tower application by another provider many, many years ago.
So are there any other questions for staff?
Well, one of the questions I was gonna ask, I see that it's AT&amp;T on all these. Is that a shared tower with other ones, like Verizon, other ones, or do we expect...
She just asked that question.
She just asked.
Oh, is that what that meant? Okay, sorry.
They're...
Locate.
I was just wondering if we're gonna have other ones wanting to build. Okay, thanks. Sorry.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you. So at this time, we'll hear from the applicant?
Did you mention that there was a request for a continuance?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yeah, okay, hang on. Hang on.
So, staff does recommend approval with conditions, however, there has been a request for a continuance from the Neighborhood Association, so we recommend that Planning Commission continue the hearing until July 28th. The Neighborhood Association has a regular meeting, I believe, this week.
Yes.
And they wanted the chance to meet and comment on the revised application.
Thank you.
See, I do read your stuff. I do read your stuff.
July 28th?
Yes. It's a request for the continuance.
Okay.
Hey, hi, I'm Sharon Gretsch with LexCom Development. I'm here tonight on behalf of AT&amp;T Wireless. So AT&amp;T is requesting approval to construct and operate a wireless communications facility at 19230 South End Road, which is the John McLaughlin Elementary School. The site itself was chosen... Sorry, the site proposed herein is located off of the south side of South End Road and West Filbert Drive, it's Zoned R10, and it's surrounded by residential properties. The site itself will be accessed via the existing school drive, and then via a sidewalk to the facility itself. That facility isn't actually paved, I think it's gravelled, is that correct?
It's paved around the perimeter. I can jump in for a couple of seconds. My name's Steve Bodine, and I'm also with LexCom Development for the client AT&amp;T, and I'm the site acquisition specialist who identified the site. And I'll take a couple of seconds to kinda step back to give you guys some perspective on how and why we ended up at this location. Basically, the whole search starts when RF engineering at AT&amp;T generates what's called a search map. And the search map is predicated on the fact that there's coverage gaps in the area. So, existing AT&amp;T customers are having issues, missed calls, dropped calls, inability to connect to mobile devices, a variety of issues that start coming in through the customer service side. Simultaneously, AT&amp;T RF engineering is constantly looking and analyzing their data on where coverage gaps exist in the network. Certain search maps are big, others are very, very small. Typically, when I get a search map from AT&amp;T, I'll sit down with Sharon, and the first thing we do is look at the parcels and the surrounding area, the zoning designations. You're looking for commercial, industrial areas, things that'll minimize visual impact, or tall buildings. You're also thinking about the height requirement, the RF objective that they need from a height standpoint, in this case, 75 feet. So, this is predominantly residential all around. So I was driving up and down South End Road, South Central, et cetera, in this very small search ring area. We have very limited opportunities. There were really no commercial opportunities we could go after. We started to engage with the Oregon City School District, who maintains other sites, and came to rest on this specific location. When we originally were at the site, it was actually gonna be placed on the other side of the school towards the playground. Based on feedback that came in through the school district, we went back out after doing the original designs, and shifted the site when we walked the property with various representatives from the district, and I believe the PTA and some other folks, there were several people there, trying to accommodate and figure out, you know what, we'll design this as you would like it to be designed, and we came upon this area for the development. I'll also address the question on co-locations, just to make sure everyone's clear. So the idea here is it's a 75-foot-tall monopine tree, we're trying to visualize, minimize the impact, if you will. It is now between other trees and so forth, so we're trying to fit this in in an appropriate area. It's also designed, the tower's designed for future co-locations, so whether that be, you know, the Verizons, or Sprints, or whoever of the world, it is designed to do that. So the existing lease area, if you will, is in place for AT&amp;T, but the opportunity would be for the school district in this case to entertain other carriers, if you will, and expand the ground space, and thus, more rent, if you will, for the school district would be the end result.
Another pole?
No, not another pole. And the jurisdiction, of course, will dictate this, that the reality is that this pole had to be designed so that other carriers could co-locate onto it. Thus, we don't have to try to put up another pole in the same residential area within the same search parameter. Other carriers will be able to co-locate on this pole, and then place their ground equipment adjacent to where ours is.
You're talking about another little building, is that what you mean by that conversation?
Yes. So this is gonna minimize the proliferation of towers, you know, from the drawings that you can see, we've got two levels on that, a total of three levels on that tower where antennas can be placed, and so the top level is where AT&amp;T would locate, the other two levels would be for any other future carrier.
So where would those other buildings go, then? Would that take up more space?
It would, it would take up more space. I mean, basically, the design that we have here incorporates both AT&amp;T's shelter, if you will, for our ground equipment. It also has the existing shed, if you will, that one of the improvements we said we'd do for the district is, we'll expand that existing equipment area that they have, kind of their ancillary building there. But future co-locators, they would basically put their antennas and related equipment up on the tower, but they would also have to lease ground space, additional space, adjacent to that tower.
And correct me if I'm wrong, they would still need to come before you, I think, to do that.
They'd have to go through a lot of this process.
Oh yeah, it'd be the same process all over again for the next carrier.
Do they have to come through the planning commission?
I don't know that they do.
That's just, okay.
We support co-location by our code, so that process is a site plan design review.
I didn't know if you needed to do the buildings or anything, but sheds, I guess they're called.
So part of your arrangement with the school is to replace the shed that they have as part of this building that you're proposing?
Correct.
So do they use that shed, too?
Well, right now, I think it has, like, garden equipment, and other kinda outdoor items for the kids.
But some portion of this building would be dedicated to the school.
It looks to me like, based on the picture, it's the two doors on the outside of the fence.
Would be for them.
It's for them.
Okay.
What kind of, do they give off a buzz, or any noise, or a busy signal or something?
Sure. The equipment itself, if you will, that's housed within the shelter, I mean, it does have a, there is a noise aspect to it. But again, based on the jurisdiction requirements, and the noise studies and so forth.
Right. So the ancillary equipment does have some sound, but it is located within that 12 by 26 equipment shelter. We're going to be proposing some additional baffling within that shelter to meet the code requirements, so that the sound doesn't, you know, radiate out to the neighborhood.
Nothing like a transformer-type PGE.
Well, it does have a generator in it, and that's what the major baffling will be for.
One quick note...
One quick note on the generator.
It doesn't...
Generators are not running all the time. They're basically a standby generator system. They do cycle that generator on, like, a monthly basis, and then that'll be for a certain period of time. And it can be structured, so of course, it's not during school hours, it's on a weekend, it's on at night, whatever the scenario might be, but, but we would work with, with the school district in terms of timing for that cycling.
So this wouldn't interrupt biology class, or English comp, or something like that?
We would hope not.
The kids may, would like it to, but no. No, not.
Can I ask, since we're on that subject, I hate to interrupt your presentation, but the decibel rating is compared to, I mean, what noises for the residential?
We agreed last month's hearing that we were gonna let people get through their presentation.
Okay, sorry, I was hearing all these other questions.
And then ask, so write, write notes. That's what I'm doing.
Let's let them finish their presentation.
Sorry.
Did you have anything else?
No.
Okay. So, just very briefly, the, he was mentioning that our search ring for this area was very, very small, and I just want to give you the parameters of that search ring he was given. It was from South End Road on one side, South Central Point Road on the other side. Can you read that? What is that?
It's basically about a three-block, three to four-block radius, if you will.
Yeah, about a three, four-block radius for that search ring. And most of that was generated by our...
Could you please say that again?
Don't interrupt.
The search ring itself is, it was really confined. It was very, very small.
Very confined search ring. And most of that was generated from our RF engineer, who I would like to invite to come up and speak, and I'd like to enter these for the record. These are the, primarily what kind of drove us to become to this location. Who did these go to?
Search ring, this was a three-block area?
So, based on that search ring requirement... Thanks. I'm gonna turn this over to Mo. He's the RF engineer from AT&amp;T Wireless, and he can give you kind of the reasons why we ended up here. Like we said, it was primarily demand, and...
Good evening, Commissioners.
Can you tell us what RF stands for? I think I know what it is, but for the record...
It stands for radio frequency.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yes, and I've heard a few questions from you, and I would love to answer that as well, from Commissioner McGriff and Mr. Gyo, Commissioner Gyo.
Gyo.
Gyo, my bad. Apologize.
No problem.
So, as you can see the presentation, do we have the presentation on board, or on the computer, or?
Your hand up?
No, it's fine. It's perfectly fine. So basically, the presentation, which I came up with this weekend, is actually, we're using the same exact plots, which we have used in the submitted paperwork earlier, so I've not changed anything, except I've updated a few other information. I've edited customer complaints map, so you would know exactly why, like, Commissioner McGriff asked a very good question, why do we need the site here, not somewhere else? And the reason is that map, which is coming from the people who live in the residential neighborhood around...
You're talking about this...
Absolutely, I am, sir.
So that's Exhibit B?
It's Exhibit B.
So each of those dots on your page represent a customer report?
Customer-related concern, report, issues, could be poor coverage, could be no answer, no call, no signals, bad quality, internet unconnectivity, could be anything. Basically, these neighborhoods, if you ask me, I can tell you where these are generated from. Mostly, they're coming from South End Road and the residential neighborhood surrounding. Boynton Street by Auburn Lane and Atlanta Drive, South Portlow Road, residential neighborhood around South Portlow, South Callenger Way by South Vincent Drive. You know, I have a list of these streets. I can tell you even the address, not the addresses, but I can Google it.
That's fine. This illustrates it very well.
Perfect.
I'm just curious about the ones out in the middle of the river.
Those people on the boats.
Yeah.
No, it's basically when you, and I did, when you, I zoomed out the picture, zoomed in, actually, and when I took the snapshot, it basically, when you zoom in, the dot doesn't move a lot, and probably those are wrong dots. If I'm gonna, if I'm gonna show you the big picture of it, you're probably not gonna see the dots there. So, so we are proposing a site PD-68, located at 19230 South End Road, Oregon City, and we analyzed all the options, possible options. The option we have right now, which we are proposing, basically, in the school, is one of the best options we have to cover the targeted coverage area and the area where we are getting most of our complaints from. If you see, I have analyzed another candidate, another transmission tower in Exhibit D. I'm sorry?
Exhibit D.
Exhibit D will show you the difference in the coverage, even though it's a higher, in higher in height. And from RF perspective, we need height. If it's 90 feet, it would be perfect, actually. But the location of this candidate is way too far from the search ring, and that's the reason why it cannot cover most of the area where we have issues coming from. And I'm sure if you live around, you probably, and if you have AT&amp;T, you would know the issues, because I drove over this area a few times, and I have a cellphone, and I don't get any connectivity. I don't even know how I'm gonna go home, because I need the GPS. I just moved here, so...
We shouldn't be on our cellphones while we're driving.
What's with the GPS?
Well, to be very honest, 10 years ago, cellphone was a different thing. It was just used for making the phone calls. Nowadays, cellphone is completely different. You can deposit your checks, you can make your business, whatever you want to do. And mostly, if there are 10 kids in the block, and they're watching movies on Netflix on cellphone, basically, what's gonna happen is, you're not gonna get coverage. It's gonna suck up everything. So basically, we need a site here to make sure that it provides the better coverage, signal strength, capacity, and make sure that it covers and serves the neighborhood.
So now I know who to blame when I'm not giving service.
Exactly, your neighbor.
With 10 real kids watching.
So, just to walk you through some more of the exhibits that he has here, in Exhibit A, you'll see the service before the site and as it exists right now. And you can see that, and correct me if I'm wrong...
Please go ahead.
The area that is not colored is the area that's not receiving the correct service. I'm looking at this one.
Yes, it's basically, it's not getting the best signal quality. Let's put it this way, the signal strength which you want, you're required to have to make a phone call, a good phone call, with no interruption, it's not gonna receive that.
Right.
Yes, go ahead.
And then if you look at Exhibit C, which is now colored with a little bit of yellow, you'll see that this is with the, with the proposed site, the model is run with this proposed site at 75 feet. And you can see, most of that area that we were trying to cover is now, the propagation shows that it, we're meeting our coverage objectives. We're missing a little bit off to one end of South, South End Road, but primarily, most of the area is covered.
Just to add one more note, I have tried to cover most of the South End Road to provide the adequate coverage. However, with the height restrictions, or with the height we have, we are getting right now, we're achieving, that's the best we could do and we could cover. However, the other area will get the service, it's just, again, not gonna be the best coverage signals, but it will make the calls, of course.
And in Exhibit D, he, Mo, had mentioned that we have an alternative site, or an existing tower, that's about a half a mile south, and it's a PGE tower. And at 90 feet, you can see most of that coverage area that where the objective is, is being missed. And so, and even at 90 feet, we're not gonna meet our coverage objective.
So far, do you have any questions? You can, you can stop anytime.
Yeah, I mean...
Please.
You've answered why you picked the school. I really don't care why you picked the school. The fact is, the school's willing to enter into an agreement with you. My concern is the location in the school property and its impact to the children, the softball field. I creeped a note off of Denise there. It looks like it's too close to the school. It's supposed to be no closer than its, I said the tower, and it looks like you're less than 75 feet away from the school building.
The...
Actually, I don't...
Wait, whoops!
You need to come up to the microphone.
Come up, Steve.
Have a mic.
Sorry.
I was gonna say, the setback is from the property line.
Yeah, so the setback, the one-to-one setback requirement would be from the property line, the original spot back over on the playground side. We were kind of wedged in behind the school, just to the other side of the playground, in order to meet that 75 feet. Where the current positioning is, is 75 feet from the parcel line on the opposite, opposite side, based on the survey.
So it does meet the setback requirements.
Okay.
Okay.
Someone else had asked about the, what the monopine was actually constructed of. Do you have, do you have your crib notes for the...
No. Basically, the monopine itself, of course, is still...
Yes.
The, the monopines, the, if you will, the branches, if you will, are an FRP substrate, they're like a fiberglass, so they're meant to withstand, you know, wind, rain, all the associated things. And again, the attempt here, the attempt, the goal here is to try to camouflage as best you can versus putting in a standard monopole. Again, if this school was four, five stories tall, and we could achieve 75 feet, which is the RF objective for the site in order to meet our coverage objectives, you know, we'd look for other steffing options. But in this instance, with the trees where they're at, on that parcel, those big oaks right there, this thing will, will nest in, if you will, on, on the one side into that existing foliage, to a certain degree.
They don't give any interference?
No, those existing trees are, I don't have the survey in front of me, but I'm guessing they're 45 to 55 feet. This will be, you know, 75, the future co-locator, if there was one. Typically, they're about 10 feet lower on the pole from the lowest point of the antenna. So you're, you know, 75, 65, and 55 in that general area for, you know, any future co-locator.
But how long does this take to build this thing? To construct it and put it on site?
That's a great question. I'll probably defer, but I'm thinking...
I'm actually about a month.
Three months? Roughly two to three months timeframe. One of the things, I can't get into the, too much detail on the lease, but I can say that within the documentation, you know, there are timeframes in terms of which, you know, construction activities can, can occur. But yeah, it's a two to three-month process typically.
I'm sure you've taken into consideration safety of the kids during school year, and that, because cranes and stuff like that, huh?
They would, they would work with the school district to create a construction schedule that would, you know, keep everyone safe.
Okay.
And you're gonna decorate it at Christmas time with lights?
Wouldn't that be fun?
Actually, I'll go back to that question I had about the, the noise from the generator. What would the decibels of that be compared to with other noises, like a lawnmower? Was it in the neighborhood? What would you call it?
With the, with the additional baffling, I couldn't tell you specifically. At a different site that we've worked on previously, the, the decibel level was, was likened to a lawnmower running.
Okay. And how long does the generator run at a time?
An hour, I think? Yeah, oh, 30 seconds.
30 seconds? And once a day?
No, no, maybe, maybe once a month.
Oh, once a month, for 30 seconds.
Unless there's, unless there's a power outage. I mean, if there's a power outage, then it will kick in and it will stay on until the address...
Any place that has an emergency generator, they have to start it up periodically just to keep it running?
Right, right. I was just wondering, 30 seconds isn't bad, but I was wondering about the noise level.
Usually, typically, they run for a couple of minutes.
And the time of day, I mean, I have somebody in my neighborhood who starts at 6:00 in the morning, their lawnmower, and everybody's upset with it. But, so you were talking about the time of day, I'm sure that you would do it, so it's not during school, but also not in the middle of the night, waking people up.
We'd work with the district on, you know, what the appropriate timeframe would be for that cycling.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, so I'm just trying to understand, on Exhibit A, you're showing a purple triangle, is that where you're saying is another cell tower is located?
You have to have musical chairs.
That's okay. Yes, the Exhibit A, it says existing LTE 700 megahertz coverage, and there is a key that says existing site location with a purple triangle.
Yeah.
Is that where a cell tower is located?
It's an on-air cell tower, about, I would say, 1 point's approximate, some miles away.
And there are no other cell, other, other cell towers that may not be yours in the area?
There's another one.
Okay.
South, northwest, that's another on-air cell tower, which is...
Is it on, is it shown on here?
Yes, on the left-hand side.
Oh, okay.
Extreme left.
Way up there, okay.
Yes, I was just trying to focus on the target coverage area. I mean, the map could be as big as I want, but the, my, my focus is to just, to show you where the coverage is not adequate, and we, we're not getting coverage and we're getting issues. I was not trying to show you.
Okay. So the one that's, that's shown where it's kind of saying it's near Lynn Avenue, Warner Parrot, all that work...
Mount Pleasant School.
Is it Mount Pleasant School?
Mm-hmm.
In the, in the back 40?
I think it's over by the, the tag building.
Yeah, if you drive by there, you'll see it over there.
Oh, yeah, I drive...
I thought it was in the parking lot.
It's over on that side.
Okay, that's, I didn't think it was at the school, so it's in the parking lot at the evangelical church?
Is it the evangelical church? Ah, that's it. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, you're right.
Now, Commissioners, I'm sure we have covered the emissions and the part of it, but just to let you know, from the FCC point of view, this site, is, the emission rate of this site is less than 10% than what's approved by FCC, so of course, we're gonna go with FCC. They have set the rules for the safety and security of people, and just to give you this knowledge. And mostly, it's not, not just us, but any other carrier. They always make sure that they are way below than what the threshold is. Plus, the ERP, which we call the radiated power, radiation power, it's 700 watts, rather than 1,000, which is approved by FCC again. So we make sure that it's way less than, than what's approved, to ensure the security.
For me, the thing is, is if you're having coverage issues, that also means 911 calls are having coverage issues.
That's...
And there's a fire station right there, and they should be getting the calls that are only 20 feet away, not the calls that are two miles away, so...
Well, exactly. And not just that, there are other devices nowadays which are out for older citizens, where you can just press a click, and they're here. But those devices, they run on, on coverage as well. They run on cell coverage as well. They have contract with the Sprint AT&amp;T, and you have the network. So enabled to work with, I mean, we need coverage in this, this area.
That, that may be the case. I'm, I just wanted to say on the record that I'm, I'm really not thrilled about the tree being removed, because it's a large tree, and that's one tree too many, even though it's only one tree.
We're more than happy to plant additional trees to mitigate.
It does, to me, unfortunately, ma'am, I'm sorry, but that doesn't mitigate. You can't get a big tree right away by planting a whole bunch of other little trees. So I'm just saying on the record that I'm not real excited about the fact that we're cutting down a tree, there's not that many trees at the school, and it's, you know, so you don't have to comment, because we've got other people. I guess I'm just, I just, I'm troubled by the location. I'm just gonna say that for the record, and you don't have to respond, because the hearing's gonna be open later on, so...
That's true.
We can, you know, thank you, unless you have something you want to add, and then we can get to the public testimony.
Can we move to the public test?
Yes. I, I don't have...
I know, this is just very complicated, Tony, and it's not really that simple to understand if you're not an RF engineer.
Steve, go ahead.
Yes, last comment, in terms of the location, the removal of that tree, is that, again, we started the process, the whole design was on the opposite side of the parcel.
I heard, I heard.
And so anyway, it was the, it was the district official, member of the PTA, et cetera, et cetera, that said, we wanted position here.
I, I...
That's okay, they don't always get what they want.
Yeah, I think there's always a balance there. I don't have any cards from the public. I don't have any cards from the public, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak? No, they already spoke.
Okay.
Anybody?
No.
Nope?
Okay. The record's open.
Yeah, I would move that we, if you want to...
I'll take a, we'll close the testimony for tonight, but we'll leave it open.
You leave the record open. I would move that we continue this application, PC fourteen oh seven-three, to a date and time certain, which is July twenty-eighth.
Second. The record open.
Yes, I said that.
Yeah. Second.
Moved to second?
Second by Mr. Guo.
Commissioner Espy.
Hi.
Commissioner McGriff.
Hi.
Commissioner Mayby.
Hi.
Chair Kidwell.
Hi.
Commissioner Mahoney.
Hi.
Commissioner Guo.
Hi.
Oh, can I make one more comment, Mr. Chair? I completely slipped my mind, but I do want to say for the record that I am an AT&amp;T Wireless customer, but I am not in any way affected or biased by this particular application, and I don't feel I have an ex parte contact.
Uh-oh. Now she's done it.
Well, they don't send the bill, they're the, but I, just excuse me for not saying that. I do have, that is my, that is my carrier.
You're in trouble now.
The truth came out.
Yeah.
So, Tony, do we have any communications?
I do like my service, by the way.
No, I don't, I think we'll take a look at the agenda for the twenty-eighth, I think we might have got some things slipping again here, so. Longer night, I believe we also have a discussion about that moratorium that night, so, trying to do our best to manage the agenda, but some things may slip that are less important than some of the land use decisions.
I thought the moratorium information was very helpful and really very thorough. It's pretty self-explanatory.
Along those lines, sorry I missed the thing, I thought it was Wednesday night, so I was, and as I was prepping for the meeting, it's seven-thirty, this, oh, it was tonight. And it, the video isn't up, was it tape?
Yeah, for the work session?
I can look into that tomorrow.
And then, I guess, I have just kind of a general comment, I was a little dismayed to get a card about the planning commission making a decision before I'd been informed as a planning commissioner that it was even gonna be on our agenda. So, I got the little orange card before I got any information about their being a moratorium.
I got one as well.
So, I just, maybe just a little email or something saying, by the way, that sewer problem is big, and we're gonna have a big discussion about it. It would've been kind of nice, because I had people asking me about it, I'm like, I got an orange card, thank you.